Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Londonderry Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, November 12th, at 7:00 p.m. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we just remain standing? We had a...we'll receive a brief presentation, or we'll receive a presentation from the town moderator later on. And huge thank you to the staff and the volunteers that conducted themselves professionally, had a fair and honest election, regardless of anyone's feelings on the results or not. But I would just like to have a moment of reflection and appreciation for all those that have served on Tuesday, and also those who serve in elected positions.
If we can just add one thing to that.
Please.
Just prior to the election on Saturday, longtime resident Andy Mack passed away.
Yes, thank you, John.
Andy was an icon in this community. He served in multiple roles. He did a lot of great things. His family has done a lot of great things for this community and molded and shaped this community. And a big thank you to the Mack family for sharing him with us.
Please be seated. All right, folks, we're going to open in public comment.
Good evening. Linda Green, 22 Sugar Plum Lane, Londonderry. And I'm here actually to do some fun stuff from the Historical Society where I'm president. First of all, I want to give the town some photos. These are...can you hear me?
Yeah.
These are before and after photos of some historic sites in Londonderry that we did at the library, and just wanted to give them to you. One is the Grange, and the other one is the old town hall, which is now being considered to be renovated. But the really, really fun thing is...see this box? This box was used as for voting from 1800 to 1900, right here in Londonderry. We found it in the town, the old town hall. And I thought, when I touched it, I'm like, "Oh, my God." Compared to what we just went through on Tuesday, this is what were they using? It was just a box with a hole. And people are welcome to take a look at it if they want to. I think that's okay. It's wood, it's pretty strong. So, and I just too want to say a word about Andy. Andy Mack was such a valued member. Without him, there would be no Historical Society. He provided the land, the beautiful land. And I said to him, "Well, that land is valuable." He goes, "Oh, it wasn't producing many apples, so I gave it to you guys, but it's probably worth a million dollars in real estate value." But that was the kind of man, and he was. And we are so grateful to him, and we will miss him. Thank you.
Most definitely, thank you.
Does anybody want to look at our box? Moderator did.
Bringing them back.
Good evening.
Hi. Can't compete with that. Beth Morocco for Westwood Drive. I just wanted to be here tonight to say that Erin Mattlin and her librarian, team of librarians, are just stellar. I've been here for a few decades, and no other time have we had such a communal treasure. And I just really wanted to advocate on behalf of their budget that they presented. I attend all of those monthly trustee meetings, and have been following the agendas for a few years. It's just, she is so conservative in her numbers. She just puts out the barest minimum to just keep making that place shine. I'm asking people to support her, and I'm excited about the warrant article that will ask voters for a children's librarian full-time. It's a very necessary position that, once they have somebody in that position, they're just going to just soar, even beyond what they're doing there. So, thank you to them, and they are just truly remarkable, and we're just so proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Brian Young, Vice President, Local 3160, professional firefighter at Londonderry, resident 14, Fieldstone Drive. I come up this evening to do a couple of things, and as I committed to several weeks ago, I'm here to represent my members as well as the taxpayers. First and foremost, I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to Justin Campo, the Finance Department, Chief LeBlanc, Chief Heinrich, and the Town Council for their support in finding a means to get us to 13 members per shift by finding that extra position. So, from Local 3160, we say thank you. We appreciate your due diligence and your effort to that. I also come up here tonight to recognize firefighter paramedic Justin Hines, who this past weekend spearheaded our annual event to feed 120 senior citizens at the seniors' center on Saturday. It's an event that we put on every year, annually, and it's well-received by the senior citizens, and it's something that he's put a lot of time and effort into every year that he's taken the reins, and we just want to recognize him and say thank you. Now for the less fun stuff. So, our local would like some stability. We're notified that the town manager has been absent. We've seen no further follow-up from where he is, what's going on. My understanding is that's what's holding up the posting of the Fire Chief's position and subsequent postings within our organization. So, we respectfully ask that the council provide some direction to whomever's in charge at Town Hall, since the town manager is yet again missing, even though we've told he's still here until April. So, we'd like to see some direction, some stability, and some movement forward to our organization. The other thing I implore is that we find the money to get to 13 every single day. I know that once we hire these individuals come January 1st-ish, that should alleviate some things. We have some people coming back from injuries, long-term cancer diagnoses. So, if Mr. Campo here could find some time in his very busy, very busy schedule to take a look at our overtime line and maybe send that information out to us, as well as the taxpayers, I think they'd appreciate that follow-up. It's budget season, we understand. It's not a demand, just a polite request. And then, yeah, that's pretty much it. Nice and easy for you guys tonight, but really, just a thank you to you, sir, and the Finance Department, and just a thank you to the council for allowing us to push that forward. And just some information and transparency as to what's going on with Mr. Malaguti, and where is he? Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Bouchard, 8 O'Connell Drive. Two weeks to reflect here on what's been going on since the last council meeting. And first of all, I want to say to Justin that I think you do a marvelous job, and the attacks on you were uncalled for. Anytime you have any question for Justin, you ask Justin, you'll get a straight answer. I remember one time when I questioned the part-time employees getting benefits. He didn't mess around. He gave me a straight answer. Can't tell you, say that was always the case with other finance people. But, so, Justin, I think you're doing a great job. I also watched the budget process as you guys were getting ready to go through the budget process Saturday, presented it by the department heads. And I think for 17 years now, I've been coming up here and telling, asking the council to address these budget issues. And, you know, the can's been kicked down the road because nobody wants to raise taxes. And I understand that, nobody wants to raise taxes, but, you know, this SB that we're under is a terrible process, you know? We had a union steward stand up at the last meeting and say that, you know, "If you go over budget, you get fired." Well, that's not the case, because there are department heads that have gone over budget in the past. And I think it's up to you guys to make sure that they get the proper training, the proper guidance, so that that doesn't happen. And I know Justin tries to do that, tries to guide them in the right way. But you really need to address these underfunded lines. For years, I think, for example, the police department, I think their line item for cruiser maintenance was some ridiculous thing, like $5,000, you know? You can't do that. You've got to address these issues. You know, when, and I'm sure none of you remember this, Chief Ball, Chief Hicks on the Fire Department, Chief Webster, these are all people that ran their budgets and they didn't go over. And all of a sudden, when you have a department head that goes over budget and it's going like, "Oh, well, we just won't fill these positions," you know? 17 years ago, I was watching a council meeting when they were looking at cutting personnel, and I was retiring. They were looking to cut two people, all right? My retiring saved those two people. But did the department head say anything like, "Hey, Dan's retiring, let's use that money"? No, they pad their budgets, okay? And, you know, you have people like, you know, our police chief who comes into the situation. It's his mess now to clean up, to try to line up these, you know, these items correctly. Chief Butler had the same situation, okay? I remember coming up here and asking about the foam we had on these trucks. Everybody's concerned about the water, the water. And we know that if that foam was used, that can was kicked down the road, kicked down the road, until Chief Butler is the one that addressed it. Chief Butler pulled that stuff off, you know, which could, you know, which was an easy fix. But I'm asking you, I know it's tough when you're going through this budget process, but if you have to make some realignments, adjustments, to staff everything properly, fund these line items properly, do it, okay? Nobody wants their taxes to go up. But we've gotten into this situation because the can's been kicked down the road too many times. Everybody wants to go under default, under default, you know? I can tell you this, all right? The school department, if you look at their budget, you're not going to have an administrator at the school department say, "Well, I'm not going to fill..."
Dan, can you start wrapping it up?
Yeah, "I'm not going to fill four or five teaching positions." No, they need those teaching positions, so they have them and they fill them, okay? So, that's what I'm asking you to do, all right? Fill our positions like we should have, so that department heads don't have to look at it and say, "You know what? I'm not going to fill X amount of positions because I have to balance my budget." It's not fair to the taxpayer.
Thank you.
Who says, "Hey, we have 47 personnel that we're funding, we should get 47."
Thank you, Dan.
Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good job, Justin. Keep up the good work.
Anyone else?
Yes, Doug Thomas, 143 Mammoth Road. I'm not going to steal Jonathan Kip's thunder here. I just want to say thank you for Jonathan Kip and his exceptional crew during the elections, what they went by so smoothly, to the town and the school area and the school for doing great jo...and the alert people for doing a great job on traffic control, and the police department as well. And also, thank you to the voters who were very patient standing in line. We really appreciated that so much. It was a stellar job. I don't think there's anyone better than our moderator, Jonathan Kip, in the state. And thank you again for an outstanding job, and people should really appreciate the fact that we have a stellar crew here, working here every election. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive, Londonderry, New Hampshire. Here as a citizen and a homeowner, I also wanted to thank about the elections, that it was absolutely an incredible day, the work that people did and the hours that they put in. But since 2016, I have expressed concerns about the fact that we only have one place for over 16,000 people to place their votes. We had almost 3,000 absentee ballots. Many went to get absentee ballots because they didn't want to wait in line. I spoke with Captain O'Donoghue, and it's my understanding, I believe he said, and correct me if I'm wrong, there were 18 police officers there. I believe he said 18. And we talked about the fact that if we put out three voting places, they wouldn't need that many. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he said he would need about three at each place. We could cut the 18 possibly in half. That's a significant savings, and perhaps that might offset the added costs for dividing. But the bottom line is, the residents were unhappy. They were unhappy, and we're here to serve the residents. I had many people say to me that they turned around and didn't vote, did not vote, because they were going to be required to stand in line for up to two hours. That's not fair to our residents, absolutely not fair. I ask you to seriously consider changing the way things are done for the benefit of the residents in town. My second thing I wanted to talk to you about was the budget. I'm a homeowner. It's going to kill us. We have three critical, what I consider, critical services in this town. We have the police, the fire, and the public works. Those are our three critical services in this town, the services that affect every single resident in this town every single day. Those are the people, those are the departments, that we really need to look at and see what they need. I know that there are contractual agreements that you have to go by, and the rates for insurance and electricity and heating and all of that are going up. I want you to consider negotiating with those critical people. But the residents of this town have had to tighten their belt, tighten their belt for their home budgets. So, I'm asking you to consider that maybe other than our three critical departments in this town, they need to tighten their belt. And think about trying to live under the budget that they've had to live under for 2024. I know I'm living on the budget that I've had to live on since 2021. So, consider it. We are here for the residents. Every resident in this town has had to tighten their belt. Perhaps the town employees need to tighten their belts, too. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Couple items. First of all, I thank Jonathan Kip. John, you did a great job.
I have your name and address, sir, please.
Yeah, Jim Butler.
Thank you.
Ted, Jim Butler, 5A, Danbury Court. The second thing is, I was doing some research, and these are approximate numbers when we talk about tax and tax rates in the state of Londonderry, I mean, the state of New Hampshire. There's approximately 265 towns or villages in the state of New Hampshire. Londonderry ranks approximately 215 out of 200, lowest in the state of New Hampshire. When you take a look at the surrounding towns, I think there's nine surrounding towns in New Hampshire, and Londonderry is the seventh lowest tax rate of the surrounding towns. So, when you think about taxes and tax rate, and people always say, "Oh, gee, Londonderry is expensive." Well, if you really take a look at it and look at the history, it's not as bad as...
Can you address the council, please?
...some of the other people. What did you say, Ted? I refuse to talk to you, you know that.
Please use the microphone, Jim. That'd be great.
That's it.
Yeah. Paul?
Don't address me.
All right.
Ted will take care of it.
All right, Ted. Chairman.
Okay, three things, and I'll go quickly because I'm sure I'm going to get shut off. During the October 7th meeting, when the situation came up about the resignation of the Fire Chief, I asked for information concerning open positions in the town and related costs. My request for information did not make it into the town minute meetings or the council minute meetings. Why? One has asked this, is this a form of deception or just poor management? I requested this information in public form that was also televised. It is now approximately 35 days, and I have not received what I requested. 35 days. I'm a taxpayer in town, I've been in town for 34 years, and I still haven't received anything. And based on what had happened during that meeting, you would think that someone with some common sense would say, "We better get that information to them." 35 days, gentlemen, unacceptable, poor management. I know one thing, in the private sector, that wouldn't be tolerated, not tolerated at all. I also think that the last time I talked to Mr. Beauchamp, who's in the room now, his request for information has also gone unanswered, another 35 days. So, one must wonder why we have requests under 91A. What has been the cost to the town for executing 91As for the last three years? I'd like to see that in the budget as a line item. Status of the town manager, I've also had some people ask me, what is the status of the town manager since his letter of resignation? And, you know, it would be great if the town kind of told us who was running the town. Is it the town manager that's resigned? Who is it? I think the taxpayers have a right to know, because I've been at Town Hall, and the town manager hasn't been around. So, he's at home. Last but not least, this is to follow up on the events of the Town Council meeting on October 7th concerning the Fire Chief. I asked the Town Council if they had any knowledge about a letter of suspension without pay for a period of one week from the town manager, Mike Malaguti. I also asked, who confirms department heads? After asking several times, Councilor Ted Coombs replied, "The council does." When I asked if the Town Council members knew about the letter, Sean Faber was absent, Ted Coombs, Ron Dunn, and John Farrell all indicated they did not. John did indicate that he had found out several hours before the meeting. Chairman Franz reluctantly responded that he did and went silent. Based on the fact that Chairman Franz's involvement or knowledge of the letter and did not notify any of the council's concerns, concerns me that the town charter has been violated. I referenced the following under the Town Charter, Article 4, Section 4.7 and 4.8, which indicates at one point that the council shall act in all matters as a body.
20 seconds left.
Yeah, I hear you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Which indicates that the Town Council shall act in all matters as a body. In making sure that the town charter has not been violated, and to the integrity of our town charter, I request that the town attorney review the circumstances surrounding this issue and use all means necessary, including...
Chad, I'm going to let him keep going.
...but not limited to texts. That's exactly the reason why I'm talking to Ted, because I figured he'd try to shut me off. But not limited to texts and emails between the town manager and chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would like some answers, by the way, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm going to add something for public comment. This is just for a public safety matter. It's gotten quite dark outside, and there's a lot of people, it's still quite warm out, and a lot of people like to go for walks or biking. I know I can't see when people are out and about walking right now, you know, even at 4:30 when I go to get my son from school. So, please, everyone, use flashlights, use reflective clothing, use, you know, remind your kids that it's dark out. Please use a flashlight and brighter clothing. If you're just going to wear black jackets, a lot of cars cannot see you. Last thing we want to do is have the police and Fire Department come to a situation where drivers can't see you. So, please. And if we can, maybe if the police can put something out on Facebook to, you know, a PSA for, you know, wearing brighter clothing and/or flashlights while walking at night, that'd be really helpful.
Anyone else? All right, seeing them, public comment is now closed. So, before I move on to new business, council is actively working on next steps on how to process and proceed best for the community. We are aggressively doing this. I understand there's a lot of questions. I understand there's some concerns. The council is actively and aggressively working on next steps, and everything is going to be all right. It stinks, it's uncomfortable, we're in a valley, and we'll make it through. We are actively working on next steps and should be able to discuss that in short order. I don't know when, I can't promise you that, but we will act as a body on what those next steps are and where we're going to go, or what road we're going to continue on. And with that, I'll move on to new...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may?
Please.
I just want to add to that, because, you know, people are asking for answers, and they, you know, it's a natural thing when this happens. So, when the Fire Chief resigned on October 7th, people are wondering, "Who's the Fire Chief? How does this go?" It's an important key position. When we have a town manager have a resignation, it's an important key position. But with important key positions, you have a chain of command on when that happens. It's not like the Fire Department was running around not knowing what to do. They handled it very well, very effectively. The chain of command worked, and everything worked as it should. While we don't have an answer on what the process is with the town manager at this point, we do have a chain of command, things that happen, things are taken care of. It's not like everything's running with no head...it's, we're following process and procedure. And if we didn't have that, it would be a troubling and alarming thing, but things are being managed as per process at this time.
All right, new business, veterans parking spot. Erin Mattlin, good evening.
Hello, town...not good with that. Hello, Town Council. I'm just following up from the request I had at the last town meeting. I believe Town Manager, Mr. Malaguti, was going to look into if there were any restrictions regarding that spot, so I don't know if there was any follow-up to that.
So, our Assistant Town Manager has some information for that.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did find that the required number of parking spaces for Town Hall is 50, and we have 52, so I don't foresee an issue with establishing this parking spot. We're also a governmental land use, and there's a statutory, there's a state law that basically says that we don't need to comply with local regulations, so it's really a non-issue.
Okay. All right, so, last meeting Erin had presented, our last council meeting, Erin had presented a veteran's spot in honor of those who served in the last packet. The location was presented. She just needed consensus, Kelly? Yeah?
I believe that'd be sufficient.
I think you had originally had located it closer to the library, but have you had discussions with Dave Wolling on another spot that might make more sense?
I had not the, because I was kind of focused because of, we have a lot of people that use the library, that are elderly and veterans. I thought that the location, I believe Chad and I went over, was appropriate, but I can certainly talk to Dave and see if there are any thoughts otherwise on that. And I did, I did all...
I was thinking potentially next one of the handicap spots might make a bit more sense.
I don't have a preference on location. I know that my thought was there is a lot of families with young children, and, you know, yeah, you know, children are soon to be parents and stuff, and I think that it's, you know, the reason why I had suggested and not directed was just to be close, but also taking consideration that other population.
Right, well, and I know a lot of veterans may need assistance when walking at times and having access to closer to a handicap spot. and having access to closer to a handicap spot, even if they are not handicapped and getting onto the sidewalk when need be.
Yeah, so the, I think the spot that was recommended or suggested is close to the crosswalk and the sidewalk there. So it does lead to, sorry, just distracted. It does lead to a safety, you know, allowing for a safe passage to the library. And then that crosswalk actually leads to a handicap essentially ramp.
Right, right.
So I think the suggested parking spot was a good idea because of its location to the ramp and the crosswalk.
Yeah, I think whatever would make sense between Public Works and the town management office.
Okay.
And we're still maintaining the same number of handicap spots?
Yeah, that's not changing.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah, I'm not taking any way of those, absolutely.
Anyone else from the council?
If we're going to do something for veterans, if we could do one other thing while we're talking about this?
Of course.
I attended the veterans breakfast on Saturday, a very nice event and everything. And since two thousand and twelve, the council has, who the town manager's budget has paid for half of it, came to my attention that we didn't pay for half of it this year and that we still have that opportunity to do it. And I would ask that we authorize the finance director and the town treasurer to assist the school in paying for the veterans breakfast if we're going to do a parking spot as well.
So let's separate these two. Is there consensus on the veteran, the request from the library director?
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Justin, you're also, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Justin, what is the vehicle and the means to, or Kelly, the vehicle and the means to do that?
So, we authorize it through the general fund. At this point, I believe it was under the town manager's budget, which I did not reach out to the treasurer in order to receive approval from to do it in a timely manner. However, I spoke with the school and said that I would be discussing it with whoever would take over or the treasurer and unfortunately, I did not do it before Saturday.
Okay. What's half of it?
That I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it's something that we've done previously in the past with no issue. And I can tell you right now, it will also be no issue before. It was more just a following procedure type situation.
Counsel?
I'm good with moving forward on that. I don't know, we've had done that in the past.
Small dollars.
Yep. Cool, thank you. All right, Mr. Moderator, twenty twenty-four general election recap, Jonathan Kipper, town moderator, and Sherri Farrell, our town clerk, good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to start out and just thank you both for the time and the dedication and to your staff. I know I mentioned it earlier on, but as it was previously discussed by, during public comment, phenomenal job. And I don't think many people know the hours and days that go into planning, preparation, to have perfect execution in coordination with our first responders and DPW, you know, obviously DPW Fire, PD, our clerk's office, the supervisors, the council, but a lot of that work is done under both your leadership. And I wanted to thank you both and to your team that's behind you, that has supported you throughout the years. And I'll use an old naval terminology, Bravo Zulu. So you can look that up later. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you so much for all the public comments or for your comments, Mr. Chairman. Much appreciated. I sit here on behalf of the close to two hundred people who work at an election and you've named all the departments. I want to also include the schools department, who are just our essential partners. It is a community event and I'll do my best to pass along all the kind remarks we received tonight to those two hundred people in one way or another, because those are the people who really need to hear it and I think deserve it. So just a few statistics for you for the election and then I'm going to ask Sherri to talk a little bit about the ballots and the absentee ballots especially. But collectively, those two hundred some odd people working shifts came in contact with thirteen thousand four hundred and thirteen voters who actually walked through the door. And that includes one thousand five hundred and ninety-two same-day registrants. So adding in the absentee voters, we had sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-five voters cast ballots, which is eighty-five point eight percent of our voters. And that's eighty-five point eight percent of our new number of voters, which is nineteen thousand thirty-three after the registrations on election day. Our checklist now has nineteen thousand thirty-three voters on it. There were over twenty-eight hundred absentee ballots cast and Sherri, you're responsible, you and Eric are responsible for handling those and it's quite a task. So if you would just share with the council and the public, please.
It's like so many things, I think, behind the doors and how do we get to that election day? And just a shout out to my entire office, the entire crew there, because they work endlessly from morning until the evening overtime and we received seventeen thousand ballots and then four thousand absentee ballots that could have possibly have been cast. And as Jonathan said, we had three thousand, just a tad under three thousand absentee ballot requests. Pretty fascinating because many of them are local, many of them are people that are somewhere in the United States, but when you have them from Australia or from England, Ireland, all across the world, we call those our Uakava voters. And it's amazing, the detail behind the scenes to make sure that every vote counts and that every voter is heard and we do our very best to get everything to them that they need. To have the state send us seventeen thousand regular same-day ballots to be cast and to almost cast all of those on election day, fascinating process. For the absentees, some of you are aware that we need to post ahead that we are permitted by the state to open our absentee ballots two hours after the election actually starts at six o'clock. We started at eight o'clock right on the nose and it's incredible to think that a team of two, four teams of two, plus myself and my deputy Allison in the back, worked from pretty much eight in the morning until almost ten at night processing those three thousand ballots, because it's very detailed and there's two envelopes that have to be opened. You have to examine certain parts of it, make sure everything is intact and, you know, and meanwhile, the rest of the election team is waiting patiently behind the scenes for that to happen. It's an amazing process to be a part of and, you know, and it takes everyone, as Jonathan said, two hundred workers. I was a little surprised to hear from Representative Perez that there was so much negativity around the election, because all I've heard so far is so many wonderful accolades and thank you, you know, to the team and to the police and to the fire. And, you know, what we've said to people with the lines and with the waiting is that it's very much like a sporting event. If you're going to a Patriots game, you're probably, unless you've got a special parking pass, you're going to have to wait. You don't do it all the time. It's when you can afford it, it's once every four years. So to all the people that took the time, all of you, you know, you're kind of forgetting, all of you were there with us from morning until night. And to all of the residents who picked up the phone, you know, gave Jonathan a little pat for all of the people that worked, thank you, because it is such an incredible process to be part of. A little disheartening to hear that there were so many people that were unsatisfied with it, but to the people that were happy and grateful, thank you, thank you, thank you, because it really means a lot. And twenty-four hour days are nothing when you're talking a general election and you're all nodding because you were there and you walked the walk with us. And I'm still a little tired. So thank you to everyone. Tristan, our famous van driver, everyone along the way, so, you know, just to everyone, so.
So I actually have some additional numbers for you from the outside logistics. From the outside logistics, thirteen thousand four hundred and thirteen people voted. The supervisor opened with me and told me we had seventeen thousand four hundred voters when we opened. And she told me when they do numbers for the state and say what turnout is, turnout's based on the opening number. So that's what she told me. So based on the opening number, ninety-three percent of the people voted. Then you add in the absentees and you get to the eighty-five point eight. As I kept going up and down the line with the help of everybody up here all day long, we were processing people on average at a thousand people an hour. At one point, we had a thousand and seventy-five in that hour. Every three point eight seconds, somebody was handed a ballot. At five-thirty in the morning, when I went through the line and everything, I counted approximately three hundred people in line at five-thirty in the morning. There were times that we were, you know, we averaged more or less twenty minutes on a wait. There were times we went out to ninety minutes. In checking back with the election, what I got for numbers was, is we're over a hundred and thirty people worked on the inside, thirty to forty people on the outside, and twenty-five to thirty people from the schools. We had about six hundred parking spots, give or take, in the area with overflow into the streets and the multiple buildings around us. Just for clarification purposes, as I kept going up and down the line, people kept asking, why don't we have additional, you know, polling places? And in conversations throughout the day with alert and with the police and everything else, what people don't understand is, is we only have a hundred or less parking spots at each north and south school. We don't have the capacity to handle something of this size. What people also don't understand is, is that if you have multiple polling places, it has to be for every election, not just for one election. You can't have it for one and then not have it for the others, much like how we changed the hours on the polling. Once we changed from seven AM to six AM, we can't go back to seven AM because we want to. So when only twenty-two hundred people show up and you have three polling places, it costs a lot of money. The other piece to it is that what I found fascinating about the entire thing was, is the fifteen hundred new registrants. And also, as I kept going up and down the line all day long, people said to me, said, well, when are you going to vote? I said, well, I'm going to vote at about seven o'clock. And it's, as you all may recall, at seven-ten PM, there was no wait. There were zero people in line for, you know, for new voters. Excuse me, new voters were still in line, current registrants were empty. So at seven o'clock, you walked in and there was nobody there. We opened on time and we closed at eight PM and everybody got to vote. And it was a great day and a lot of people worked really hard. And I have to say, for the most part, people were congenial, happy, thank God the weather cooperated. And it was, it was, you know, it was an adventurous day. So thank you to all of you. I know a number of you, this was your first presidential election and everything. This is my twenty-seventh election and my fourth presidential. Thank you to the police department. Brian, if you're still here, thank you for the fire department. It was, it was a community effort and it was, it was exhausting, but it was fun.
It was glorious.
So, Mr. Kip, kudos to you. You ran the show, pal.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated. I won't bring up the line then, because that's been discussed, but I heard similar comments when I was out and about about multiple polling places. That's the council's determination, so thank you for adding that. Just one last thing from my perspective. We now need to decide which voting tabulator we're going to decide on for going forward. As you may recall, we've leased these Voting Works devices. So I'll be back at a future council meeting before the end of the year to share with you what decision we've made, but it's not been made yet.
One more thing.
Please.
So the final thought here needs to be, in about a hundred and twenty days from today, we have our town election. I believe it's March eleventh, first Tuesday, second Tuesday of March. So what does our goal, our challenge have to be? If we can get over seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand votes cast for our general election, these same voters, please come out and share with your neighbors and friends. Please don't have a showing of three thousand or four thousand. We are so excited if we get four thousand voters. We need to get those same people to speak with their feet if you need an absentee ballot, but we should have that same number for everything that's going to touch our homes, our families, our small businesses in town. So it's a challenge to all of us and I think it's a way we can work together to really make sure that we should get to at least nine or ten thousand for this next town election. So I'm asking for everyone's help and let's really make it a campaign together to get lots and lots, all these same voters out again. So we're going to do little things here and there to make that happen, so. And again, cannot, we have truly, I'm not sure if Doug, you said it, we truly have the best moderator in the state. And this doesn't just happen on one day. He has meetings every month. We have one this Thursday, you know, to recap everything that happened, so we can do even a little better at the next election coming up in March. And then all of you, because I know across the state, all of the councilors, selectmen do not show up, even though they should, and you were all there. So, you know, thank you to this great town that we have and all the wonderful positive things that were said. So, and thanks for hearing us and, you know, it was nice to be able to share.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Moderator. All right, Mr. Dave Wally, Director of Public Works in Municipal Facilities, discussion regarding the holiday lights on the town common. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening. I think we have a couple of unfortunate or non-ideal circumstances to discuss tonight. The first one is that of the holiday lights in the town common. We're going to, I'm specifically going to talk about the two very large trees that are fifty to sixty feet tall, that are kind of the backdrop of the monument on the common that have been lit for some years now. As I understand it, many years ago, the fire department used to decorate that and they kind of got away from it for obvious reasons. And in twenty eighteen, the town had some lights paid to be put on, on those trees. They lasted a few seasons. When I got here in twenty-one, they were pretty well beat up, tattered, broken, lots of bulbs needing to be replaced. We were at full staff. I was kind of in a learning curve there in the early days. And so we went down, we borrowed the lift from the school district, we went down, we made do, we spliced some wires and changed some bulbs and we kind of limped through the season for twenty-one. So in twenty-two, we decided to just pull them all off. We went and bought some new ones, not, you know, state-of-the-art ones, but some of Home Depot's best and did our best to put them up there. Took us some time to put them up and whatnot. And then they lasted twenty-two and then last season, but unfortunately, in that spring storm, when we had a lot of trees down, if you recall, wires down all over town, well, those trees took a pretty good hit and the wires got all ripped, broken, tattered and torn again. So the DPW's kind of been injecting itself, you know, to try and help out with this endeavor, but we really need to get away from this business. And this year, quite frankly, we just don't have the time to do it. We've been down four positions, as I previously informed you. And so when the concerts on, excuse me, Christmas on the common, I saw them a bunch of weeks ago, they were, and I kind of informed them and it was a little heartbreaking. You know, as you also recall, Shady Hill used to donate a bunch of trees prior to COVID and those would get decorated and whatnot and the Rotary would take care of those. Post-COVID, you know, there's a tree shortage, Shady Hill can't donate them. Quite honestly, they were kind of a nightmare to manage as well and they were down there all the time. They were blown over, days like today, they'd be blown over and unplugging and whatnot. So, so the common's going to be fairly dark, unless if I get some decisions tonight on which way you want to go. I solicited a couple, there's not a whole lot of people in this business. I did, was able to get at least a couple quotes. One is very reputable, they're out of Peabody, they do down in Faneuil Hall, a lot of the trees down there is one of their bigger clients. And they gave us a few options on what we could do. Another gentleman that I got, ironically, I just happened to see his sign illegally posted on a telephone pole in town, so I called the number. Full disclosure. So you can take it for what it's worth on that price, whatnot, but it's a lot of money. And so, quite honestly, this isn't something that even comes out of the DPW budget or even general government for that matter. I believe this is something that would come out of the town manager's budget. But, you know, if given direction tonight to find something or do something, to whatever extent that may be, I'll obviously have to work closely with Justin to see which direction we go. And that's where we're at. Before we, it's a similar situation to kind of what we wound up with the crease a couple of years ago and, you know, times change and volunteers fade and things get old and worn out and we need somebody to step up and figure out which direction we're going to go.
So, full disclosure, I had a resident in the community reach out to me. I haven't spoken with them since. They had asked to remain anonymous and asked if they could reach out to Dave regarding donating and stuff. Were you able to make contact with that person?
I did. I spoke with that gentleman for close to a half an hour over the weekend and explained it to him and then he understood the full picture. You know, I have concerns about what type of equipment we allow on the common as well. I want to make sure that they're insured. I mean, you're going up fifty, sixty feet in the air, I don't want thirty thousand pound trucks, aerial trucks, like, you know, common with, you know, line companies and whatnot. And I don't know that that's what this gentleman's friend has for equipment, but, you know, we need to make sure that whoever's on there is insured, if there's rutting or damage and things of that nature, that they're going to understand what they're getting into. So this isn't, this is a higher scale of volunteerism. Let's just leave it at that. But I didn't get a definitive answer whether if they wanted to. But I didn't get a definitive answer whether if they wanted to, um, do that, once I painted the picture and understanding of what's involved. So.
Counsel?
At first, I just wanted to say, Dave, you missed your opportunity to wear a Christmas sweater today.
Yeah.
It's not Thanksgiving yet.
Hey, he's coming up here for a Christmas request. Come on.
I wanted to stay out of the colors of the political scheme right now, okay? Just go neutral white.
And I think it makes sense to move forward with something that's done professionally, um, as our town staff is, uh, stretched at the limits. And, Dave, do we have any idea upon, from the company, how long this may last or the durability of the products?
So, great question. So, the, the company, uh, that is a little bit pricier. The thing that's great about them is that pricing that you see in front of them.
The red-nosed one?
Yep. Depending on which option you select, uh, it's irrelevant which option you take. But if something does happen, like, let's say they put them up, a windy day comes along, one of them unplugs or pulls, they're there within twenty-four hours and they take care of it. That's the other part of the, when they're up, we were also having to kind of return. At the end of the season, they come and they take them down. That's the bigger problem, is that they, they've been left up, you know, year after year after year, and that's, you know, it's not good for them. The UV breaks down, the wires, they get brittle, they break, they snap.
Burles, chipmunks.
And so, they'll, they'll take the, they'll take them down, they storm away and, and whatnot until the next year. So, um, the maintenance is, the maintenance is big, and, um, and then they take them down too. So.
Now, what about, compared to the other company that we have here?
He claims he'll do the same.
Okay. You have a preference?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we, do we, is there a reason why we do the two big trees?
I have to defer to the previous town manager or history. I, I don't know why they're doing both. That's, that's why in the options of the second company, he said, you know, you could do the highest, highest price there, the nineteen-eight, I think it is. That's both trees decorated to the max, the trunks all lit up and everything. Second option is, um, do both trees, but just half the amount of lights. What was great about this company, they even brought out the type of lights, so you could see the brightness and whatnot, so they could go with a lesser grade, and they could do less lighting, less illumination. And then the third option is just take one tree and then just do that one to the max. So.
So here would be my question, is, and I'm trying to think outside the box.
Sure.
What's the least amount of maintenance? And in my mind, the least amount of maintenance is dealing with permanent structures. So, such as the War Memorial and the bandstand. And if we didn't have to deal with the trees, because trees change, you know, as a long-term type of thing, would that be a good idea, or would that be effective? And if the tree, if everybody wants to do the trees, great. I'm just trying to think about, there's companies out there that will say, we'll do all this for you, we'll take them down, we'll storm for you, and then come back the next year.
Right.
And if we had less breakage or less maintenance involved to it, is that a, a solution that is, you know, plausible? I, I don't know the answer to that. I'm just asking.
Yeah, well, the maintenance is included in, in all of this, whether we do one tree, two trees, they maintain it while they're up, and then they take them down. So.
I think what John is asking is what's the ROI and what's the long, what would be a better, and correct me if I'm wrong, what, what would cause more longevity? Putting it on a permanent structure that doesn't shake, move with the wind, or putting it on trees?
Well, if, if you're talking about decorating the bandstand as opposed to doing the trees, then I would probably say the bandstand would be the easiest thing to do. And then, yeah, there's left, there's nothing to move, there's no, but again, the risk, we're shifting the risk to these companies. So.
Understood. Just asking.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not saying one or the other.
Right. Yeah.
So, to understand this correctly, when the, the maintenance is included, let's say we put it up and like, a whole bunch of them get broken. It really doesn't make a difference because they're taking care of all of that. So, with, with these proposals anyway.
Correct. Yeah. The risk is all on them. Again, it's another reason why it's, it was really hard for us to, I mean, we were just trying to be the nice guys on the block and keep them up and going, but they'd break, we'd have to run back down, then we'd have to call the school district, borrow their lift, and, you know, and then, once we're into January, we, we don't have time to go and take them down and whatnot. So.
When, when do the lights typically go up? And the reason why I'm asking is because I know that we have a.
Yeah, they, 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 they both hounded me all last week on, what are you doing, what are you, because they wanted to put me on their schedule immediately. Um, and I said, I won't know until the twelfth, until tonight.
Go ahead.
If this is their, this is what you would call their busy season.
Yeah. To say the least, yeah.
Now, I see on here, at least from one of the companies, it's free maintenance between now until one-one, twenty-twenty-five.
Correct.
What about in future years?
Well, this is, this will be coming at us every year. If you, when we get into the budget review, this was placed in there. Would they, I was going with just a presumption. I'm like, we'll put it in the budget, presuming we want to do this each and every year, but yeah.
So they'll charge us this much every year is what you're saying? There's no discount for future years?
If we, perhaps if we, uh, go into a bid process, you know, I mean, right now, it's upon us or whatnot, but in future years, we could probably bid it and do a multi-year agreement and then probably get, solicit better pricing. Yeah.
Would you be?
But at least it would be built into the budget, so it'd be there to, to, to do that.
Of course. Would you be able to go back at them and ask for multi-year prices?
This is, this is, this is a one-year.
I would recommend we do the bid process next year. This year, we weren't, I wasn't anticipating
Gotcha.
Nine thousand dollars for Christmas lights.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, um.
I would just say, as one counselor, it's tough for me to sit here and authorize eleven thousand dollars to spend on Christmas lights when we've got people in town that can't afford certain things. So, I don't know. For me, we want Christmas lights for eleven thousand dollars on the common. We want to not have them at all, or look at the volunteer option.
Yeah. I know that, I know that we have a meeting on the eighteenth, and I'd like to, and I can take care, reach out. I'd like to hear back from them, you know, and I appreciate you taking the time to speak with them, and especially talk about liability, about sprinkler heads, ruts, and everything else, maintenance and such.
Yeah, we've been spending a lot of money on the, on the grass and the turf to get it back, because it took a beating this year with, you know, it's been pretty dry and everything else, and it has struggled over a couple of years. So that's a, that's probably the most important thing in my mind, is that I don't want just anybody that, it's going down there thinking they're doing a good thing, and, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. So. And then just, you know, from liability standpoint, I mean, you're up fifty, sixty feet in the air on a day like to, I mean, uh, you know, volunteer stuff to kind of, this is a little bit outside of my comfort zone for something like that.
If, if we wait six days till the, in our next meeting in the eighteenth, let me rephrase that. What's the turnaround that they can install once it's authorized?
Well, they just, I, I think from, uh, their standpoint, they, they want to just get on the schedule. I know the date, I believe, is December seventh is the actual event on the common. So, and, you know, you've got the Thanksgiving holiday mixed in there, so the.
It's the eighth.
You know, eighth, I'm sorry, thank you. So, depends on, uh.
Cutting short on time.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, a few more days, I don't think it's gonna hurt anything, but, you know.
I've talked to a number of these companies about, on a personal level, these people are straight out right now.
Yeah.
So, if we're gonna wait, I'm, I'm just curious about, you know, it's either do it or don't do it, I think, at this point, right?
It is.
So, I, I, I don't know. I mean.
But when you say six more days, and I don't, excuse me, Counsel, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, he's talking about go to next Monday.
Oh, so for the next council meeting?
Meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, but literally, these people are straight out.
Yeah.
And then trying to get in touch with them is near impossible.
Both, both of them were pressing me pretty strong, uh, and, and to the point, I tried to get a third quote. I couldn't even get people to call me back. So.
Uh, do you need a consensus, or do you, Justin, or do you, where, where would these funds come from?
Town managers' funds, I believe?
Either there, we do have a town common line, but it would be over expended what's currently in there, which is why in this year's budget, you'll see the increase in the town common line to reflect, should you guys want to continue doing this going forward. At this point, with everything, the eleven thousand was difficult for me to.
Appropriate?
Yeah. I wanted you guys to make this decision, because with everything else going on currently, I, I struggled saying we should spend this amount on the common when we could spend this in other areas that are beneficial to the public.
And on top of that.
And I'm not trying to downplay the beneficialness and the feel that it provides, but in prioritizing this, to me, wasn't towards the top.
Right, and we're, we're exceeding, you know, the, the bid process, so, uh, we kind of need a waiver on that, and, and I can't even get three quotes for that matter. So, I mean, it's kind of above our heads.
An option D for this year, working with Contras on the Common, for the lights that are on the bandstand, to go at a, um, a Christmas color theme?
They do that anyway.
Lighting settings on their bandstand.
Yeah.
Would that work for this coming year? I think that could be a good option for the time being to save us on the money.
Yeah, they do that, they do that anyway. Um, you know.
That's already, Shady Hill donates the stuff, and they do the lights up there anyway, and they do the Mr. and Mrs. Claus thing with the rotary and everything.
No, I meant the lights that are in the bandstand. You can change the lights.
Right, they, they do that.
That's, that's been customarily done. It's just, these are the two.
Something's done.
Yeah, just trying to think of another option for us to save the money.
Look, I, I, I'm not trying to be funny, but, you know, we, either we're Ebenezer or we're the Grinch. And, or do you want to be Santa Claus? You gotta pick which one.
I don't think we should be spending eleven thousand dollars on this one. That's my hope.
So I heard from John, Ted, and Ron, Sean?
I think, when it comes to line items, this isn't relatively that large in comparison. I get wanting to save money. Um, but this isn't fundamentally gonna make a difference, I think. So, you know, it's like, like John said, whether Santa or.
Which one of you guys want to cancel Christmas?
Yeah, I don't. I, I don't feel good about.
That, that's the question.
That's why I brought it here.
I don't feel good about having a dark common. I guess. It's, and, and the problem is, this is, you know, we, we've changed this arrangement this year, and this is good. I'd feel better next year when we can have a bid process, we can look at this, we can, and do some things. This is, you know, and I appreciate you getting these together quickly. Um, this is more or less the quick and dirty option, and that's, you know, what we're looking and left with. So.
Dave, my understanding of this is, they do this this year, they, we buy everything, and then they take it all, they store it, they come back, and the cost is less next year, right?
No, it, it'd be reoccurring.
This is just a service contract. This is not an ownership contract.
Come, they do it.
Right.
You own everything, and then the next year, they come back and it's about seventy percent of the cost.
Put it all back up, yeah.
And they put it all back up.
Yeah. So we, after this year, we would, what, what we were talking about was.
To explore those options.
We would do, we would do a multi-year bid type, yeah, and then we would probably see some savings, for sure.
Understood. Thank you.
So it looks like this would be way less than a penny on our tax rate in general. So, I mean, we're arguing on.
I, I think we're giving the pennies.
Fracture of a penny, like.
I'm not trying to be funny, but, you know.
We're looking at optics too, guys. We're gonna spend eleven thousand dollars on holiday lights.
Should we spend eleven thousand, or should we spend the nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty, or one?
The question becomes, is this, I, I'm sorry, and I'm not, I'm not trying to give you a hard time. Do you want to be the counsel that cancels Christmas? I mean, it's just really, that's what you.
I'll be the Grinch. I, I don't, I'll be the one Grinch up here, but.
Please. Please. Sean, you're a yes?
Yeah.
Ted?
I'm a yes.
Ron, you're no?
No.
Sean, you're a yes? Me three?
We spend more money on fireworks.
Well, I'd like to hear. We got through Ron. I'd like to hear.
Okay, fine, yeah. Justin or me?
No, no, did, did John, did, did you ask John?
Well, John said he's a yes.
Okay.
I, I didn't answer. He said I was a yes.
I'm sorry. My apologies.
That's why I was like.
Counselor Farrell?
Did we miss one?
I'll, I'll vote after you do.
I'll wait for you.
If, if, while we're waiting, while we're waiting.
It's my interest.
Do we know which option you're voting on? I mean, there's four, there's four essentially, there's one vendor that's, you know, the eleven, then there's this three options. To Ted's point, like, there's one tree decorated to the max at, at the nine, or two mediocre, or two, you know, to the max. So, um.
Guys, it's Christmas.
I just.
Say yes.
I just want to know which option you're saying yes to. That's, that's all. If, if that's the way the council, uh, proceeds.
Which tree is this, if it would be the one?
What, what they, what they said, they would take the more prominent one, which, if you're looking at it from Mammoth Road, would be the one to the left, it's larger and taller.
Left of the monument?
Yes.
Kelly?
Just to reiterate what, what Dave was saying, we just need clarification on.
Which one?
If you're saying yes, which one, and then you'll need to waive the bidding process.
Yeah.
Yeah, the eleven thousand dollar one.
Well, so.
So, actually, if you look at it.
There's, there's, yeah, there's two. There's one gentleman that's quoting eleven thousand, and then there's, uh, the other red, uh, uh, red-nose deer.
And this is the better service option, it looks like.
The guy who's doing eleven, he's doing two trees?
Yeah.
Never thought we would spend this long discussing about Christmas.
I know.
Option one from the one guy, he's doing two trees, and he's doing twenty thousand dollars, and, uh.
The other guy's doing two.
The other guy is doing two trees, and he's gonna do less lights than fifteen thousand dollars, and then there's one tree for nine thousand dollars. But the guy for eleven thousand dollars is gonna do two trees.
Correct.
I'm just splitting the difference.
What do you want to do? Which option? John, did you say eleven?
I, I'm only looking at numbers. I mean, eleven, I'm functional with eleven thousand.
What's the difference between the, the maintenance between these two?
Maintenance is the same.
Okay, so, because you have, you suggested, you recommended the other one. Um, what are some of the reasons for that?
Well, we haven't said his name, so, uh, you know, I don't like to talk shop too much out in public. But it took me a while to get him here. The first time that I called him, he wasn't even interested. He was so busy. He said it's probably over ten thousand dollars, and he wanted to know how you budgeted for it. So I pointedly said, not specifically, but, um, you know, I want, I need quotes, I need prices. And he kind of blew me off for a few days. Then, after I had gotten the other gentleman lined up, he called me out of the blue and said, hey, I'm around today. If you're around, I can meet you down there now and, you know, give you a price. So, you know, when you operate like that, I get a little wary that maybe something else that he was bidding on fell through, and now he's running around scrambling to, you know, and whereas the other company, and that's, the other company, just, that is specifically what they do year-round. They do restaurants, Faneuil Hall. You know, you see lights like that are on, like, the ninety-nine restaurant, they're up all year, you know, illuminating light. They do commercial work.
And that's the one that provides the three options?
Correct. And the other gentleman was, his placard nailed on a telephone pole. That's all I got his number. So, I'm just, that's about as much vetting as I've done on both individuals. So.
All right.
So what I'm, what my fear was is, you know, we're, we are gonna, if, if we're gonna spend some money, I want to make sure we're successful at it. Uh, you know, I want to, that's my concern. So.
Decision time. Which option?
I said we go in the middle with option two.
Can he, can he do better than the fourteen-nine-eighty-eight?
Yeah, I can ask him to beat it. I can beat it up a little bit.
We've got this other one for eleven and just.
So do you want to authorize him a dollar amount up to?
I mean, yeah, we could up to whatever option we pick, and then try to get under that.
Sean, are you doing math over there?
Just give me a second.
Okay, so basically, all he did was take option one and divide it in half to get to option three. And he's just dividing option.
Yes. Yeah. One, either two trees to the max or one to the max. So, yeah, essentially, it's.
Basically doing the same thing. He's just, he's just dividing numbers in half.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, option two is fine. Ask him if he can give us a better number, and I can live with that.
Okay. I can do that. Yeah, I, I know that Red Nose was very interested in becoming a long-term client of ours, and so I can ask him to sweeten the pot.
All right. So option two?
Okay.
Are you, sorry.
And then.
Are you authorizing up to an amount, or are you just?
Up, up to that, up to that price, right? And if I can do better, I can do better.
A number.
Clarification. So an authorization up to fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for option two with Red Nose?
Yes, and with the hope of negotiating down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Your consensus. Thank you for your time.
And did you waive the bidding process?
Do we have to do a motion? Okay, so I'll accept the motion to waive the three bid, uh, process.
So moved.
A motion from Ted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Sean. All in favor, say aye. Second from Sean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes any affirmative, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, might as well stay up there, Mr. Wally, discussion regarding the repair and the heating system of the Reverend Morrison Meeting House.
Yeah, more great talking stuff. So the Reverend Morrison House, Meeting House, has an unfortunate circumstance, the heating system there, the heat exchangers are cracked, and so, they are locked out, tagged out, meaning we have no heat in the building. Now, the building has been winterized, anyway, I winterized it almost two years ago anyhow, so there's no fear of bursting pipes or anything to that extent. Um, I had our HVAC company that were in the contract for our facilities in town, they are not under contract for that, we don't have a warranty contract, but they still honor any work outside of that, they still honor their contract pricing for us, so we had them come out and look at it, and we were gonna have them do a little maintenance, because we knew we had a problem with it anyhow, uh, and that is unfortunately what was found, so. I had them give me a price, um, quickly, just to replace the heat exchangers, not the entire unit, thinking to go as low as possible while we're still, you know, finding our way with what is to become in that facility, and so, that's what's in your packet here tonight, is the nine thousand nine ninety-five.
I don't have that much.
I'm sorry, if you don't, my bad, yeah, yeah, I did not forward that on to Shearson, she asked me, and I said, well, let's, let's hold on for a minute, so.
Does it absolutely have to be done?
No.
So then we can continue going through the process to figure out what we're gonna do with the lion's hall?
Correct.
Doesn't absolutely have to be done?
No, I, I.
Or Morrison House, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, you know, any facility that isn't heated or cooled to a certain point, you know, it's not gonna be good for it, whether it's a new building, or an old building, so, it's, but it's not gonna destroy it, um, but.
Two hundred and some odd years now.
Exactly, so, um, again, nothing will really get damaged in it, but obviously, it'll be cold.
Yeah, I think, given that we have a process and a committee already in place, and this is just my thoughts, I'm thinking that having them, you know, because the furnace, the HVAC is probably part of that process. And I'm thinking, you know, the town, the council, and the voters are gonna have to determine on, on, on what's the next steps, once we get the presentation from the Reverend Morrison Meeting House Committee.
Yeah.
And again, I'm assuming that is part of it, because they're significant, the current furnaces are pretty old.
Yeah, they were, they're twenty-one years old, as a matter of fact, yeah, I have the original installation records, and so, um, but, and I don't disagree, um, I think, you know, we're, we're still navigating those waters on what's to become of the facility, and, um, even if that is to do something with the facility, in a grander nature than what it is now, these units would probably have to be replaced anyhow, and reworked for, to appropriately heat and cool the building anyway.
And that's, that's, that's my thing, is like, if we're gonna, if we're gonna possibly replace them, spend them, you know, spend the money, and then have to toss them, I just don't know if that, I don't personally think that that's, I think we should wait.
And the other thing too, uh, is just, you know, we could replace them, and then the blowers go, or it's just symptomatic, and then you probably should have just done the whole system to begin with.
Ten years old.
Exactly, I mean, you don't just replace the heat exchanger, but I thought it was at least worthwhile to bring it before the council, because, you know, um, as the building has now been sitting vacant for over two years, these are the things that start to accelerate, you know, um, they don't, a building of that age does not, you know, stay good.
Sean, Ron, Ted?
For a while.
No, it definitely makes sense to replace them now, if we potentially have to replace the whole system, why put ten grand into the system when we could be spending more money on top of that at another point in time?
Yeah, completely doesn't make sense.
Okay. All right, thank you, yeah, before I brought any EMTF in front of you, I just wanted to get consensus of the board, all right, thank you for your time.
I guess one question on that is, what is the, are we worried about the health of the system of, you know, potential, of that system, like creating a fire, or having a bigger problem with that system?
It's locked out and tagged out right now, so, yeah, as well as the well pump, everything's winterized, it's just basically like a barn right now.
Great, good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Mr. Cassidy. If it's all right with you, um, Shearson, the certificate of authority by vote for FY twenty-five HHW grant, if it's all right with you, I'd like to just change it and get through that on the old business, and then have transition to the budget workshop, all right? You ready to present?
Absolutely, it's very fast.
Okay.
So on September sixteenth, the council unanimously approved the state's right-of-way acquisitions for two parcels for the Stonehenge Traffic Circle project, does anybody need a refresher on that? Awesome. In the past, when we have done transactions, oh. Sorry, my bad, I have, that's the document that you have in front of you that you're signing. The, um, I'm gonna rewind, this one right here, the certificate of authority by vote, is for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five hazardous household waste grant. This is a grant we get on an annual basis, um, and in the past, they have, the state has accepted a document called a certificate of authority by bylaws, but their new legal representation, DES has decided that it is insufficient to show that the town employees have a right to sign this document, so they've asked for a certificate of authority by vote, which states that, um, let me just read what you're voting on, that, and I'm suggesting Kelly Karen, Assistant Town Manager, or Justin Campo, Finance Director, is duly authorized to enter into contracts or agreements on behalf of London Dairy with the State of New Hampshire, and any of its agencies or departments, and further is authorized to execute any documents which may, in his or her judgment, be desirable or necessary to affect the purpose of this vote, and this is for the purpose of entering into the fiscal year twenty twenty-five household hazardous waste grant.
Any discussion from the council? Accept a motion to approve or adopt, what's the title?
To authorize Kelly or Justin to enter into an agreement with the State of New Hampshire, to accept the household hazardous waste grant.
So moved.
A motion from Ted, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ron, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes any affirmative, thank you, next item. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Um, with that, I'll take, do a three-minute recess while the Budget Committee comes on up and takes their seats.
And just on a broader scale, if you want me to continue. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're here?
I know, I know, I just figured for the next, because we're kind of right now. I don't want to overstep on anyone.
Guys?
Yeah, we get lights, but like, you don't have the time.
Did I fill one more chair?
Yeah, there's one back there, or there was, no. Drop that, pull it up.
Do you want to take one of those, Jason? Jason, you can take one of those.
I think she said you didn't shower. I think she said you didn't shower, and then lost the next one.
Whatever.
It would just be kind of weird, just sit next to you.
Oh, yeah, I don't care.
I'm not gonna treat you any different.
No, absolutely not, I know this, I know this.
All right, just gonna wait for the Finance Director? Huh? Yeah, I agree, he would be important.
Okay, I leave you enough room, do you want me to?
All right, Mr. Finance Director, I'll give you a quick moment, so, uh, we had a budget meeting on the second of November, second?
Yes.
And, uh, heard presentations from our leadership in the community, and I know there were some tasks and conversations that were had, so with that, Mr. Campo, I'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
Absolutely, so one of the items was just to clarify essentially what was included in the operating budget request versus what was the additional request from our departments. So going through here, you'll see this is our proposed budget versus our default budget, you'll notice a slight change, an increase from November second, that is because of the additional position for the firefighters that we had discussed and gotten consensus for from the Town Council. So what I've done is I've gone through every department that had an increase of, uh, over default, and kind of broken out the reasons for those, so you'll be aware of what it is. For the Town Clerk, you'll see it was one thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars over default. The general reason is their postage has been underbudgeted, they need an increase in their overtime line, based on Department of Labor laws, as well as other things where we get more closer to paying by the minute. Um, we also took their management services line, and reallocated it to a more appropriate lines, which is why you'll see the postage have a significant jump up. Do you guys want questions between departments, or at the end, how do you?
I'm fine with you continuing and.
General Government is the next one, where there was a twenty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollar increase over default. The general causes are an increase in the furniture line, as well as increases in the Town Common expenses, as we had just discussed. Uh, the furniture line, we're looking for additional storage shelves in the Building Department, and as well as we have various, essentially, replacement schedule for furniture that is old and outdated. The Town Common, as we discussed, is mainly the winter lights on the common.
You change that on the fly?
I can make that adjustment, but as we just said, we'll put it out to bid next year to see what we get for numbers, and go from there, so I think the twenty thousand, because here's the thing, although it's eleven thousand, you can look at the history of that line, and it's historically overspent anyways, for various other things that occur on the common.
So rightsizing it?
Yeah, so even if we do stay at the eleven thousand, the additional nine thousand will likely cover other items that we don't currently budget for, that we absorb elsewhere within the budget.
Thank you.
Police Department, they are a hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars over default. The general causes, as we discussed at the November second meeting, is training, K nine and IT expenses. So for the training benefits, the federally mandated training requirements, last time they were increased, it was by fifteen thousand in two thousand twenty-one. The five-year overage, we have overspent by about fifty thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars.
How much?
About fifty, over fifty thousand, yeah.
Oh, it's right there, I'm sorry.
K nine costs, uh, it has not been updated in quite some time, since twenty seventeen, back when we had one dog, we currently have three. Um, IT expenses, if you look at the machinery and equipment line for the Police Department, its budget is currently a hundred dollars. I'm not sure you can buy an actual computer for a hundred dollars. Um, historically, that line has been overspent as well, so again, we're just trying to get it more in line with what it should pay.
Don't even think you can buy ink for the whole Police Department for a hundred dollars?
Exactly.
Or a phone.
Um, the Fire Department, they are five hundred and sixteen thousand and thirty-four dollars over default. The general causes is the overtime and associated costs, as well as rightsizing various general ledger account lines. Um, the overtime is to allow for five hundred hours per battalion chief of overtime, as well as six hundred hours of overtime per lieutenant and firefighter. Um, it also accounts for any concurrent duty overtime that they would incur as well, we tried to get a rough estimate, but we believe that would be going forward. The rights has various lines, it adjusts various lines based on the historical spend, to allow essentially for them to be more accurate with what's spent, and allow the lines to be more properly adjusted.
Thank you.
The Public Works budget, they are a hundred and seventy-seven thousand over default. The general cause is the work zone safety, CDL training, snow removal, and rightsizing the department expense line. So as Dave mentioned, with the work zone safety, this will allow an increase in safety measures, which is currently unsafe, because they're working on the road without any detail or additional support to protect our employees. CDL training, this provides us the ability to increase our labor pool. Um, we currently have one open position currently, right? Finally, one, but for the past year, it's been two, and one of the issues is CDL drivers are getting paid a lot more from the private industry, so the hope is, we can bring in some non-CDLs, get them on board, helping with various positions, then train them to get the CDL certified, and maintain them with that training. Snow removal, the number of outside snow removal services have decreased, which, as we're all aware, likely leads to an increase in the actual cost, which is what you'll see. Um, if you were to look at Massachusetts, the hourly rate for a snow removal person is significant, to put it slightly.
That's Massachusetts.
But if you're in New Hampshire, and you can go down there for a hundred dollars more per hour.
That's fair.
I would if I were them.
You're right.
Um, and it's not deep Massachusetts, it's the northern parts.
Yep.
It's actually all of them, but, uh, essentially, while we're short-staffed, or during severe weather, this will allow us to call them in. Um, actually, if you look at the line in the budget, you'll see there was one year, I believe, we spent zero. That's because our price didn't compete with anyone around us. Um, and the other one is to rightsize the department expense line. Uh, we're increasing by four thousand, we've overspent it by about seven thousand over the past five years. Solid waste, uh, it's over default by twelve thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars. This is to allow us to hire an additional solid waste attendant, currently, we require one of our DPW, actually, two of our DPW guys to go down to the transfer station, in addition to their forty-five hours that they work. We pay them an overtime rate, because it's over the forty hours. This allows us a part-time solid waste assistant at a lower rate, hopefully, we would be able to find them, and overtime, it should save us, but we need to actually fill the position first, the last time, we had no position, it took about a year to find someone to be able to fill it.
I have a question about the drop-off center.
Yeah.
Isn't, one, it's supposed to be self-funded, two, don't we pay them out of the funds we take from in there?
The drop-off center is not self-funded.
It seems that on a regular basis, it's returning money, or has a, has a, um, an excess. So where do the, where does the pay, where does the salary come from that we use now to run the drop-off center?
So for the solid waste attendants, if you look at Department twenty-seven under part-time, you'll see that there is salaries under there, as well as the overtime for the Public Works Administration line.
So the intent of the West Road drop-off center is that it's self-funded, that's the intent?
That was not my understanding, my understanding was the intent was to decrease the amount of debris on the side of the road, which is why the prices are considerably lower than surrounding towns. I could be wrong on that, but.
So the intent was never for it to be self-funded? So perhaps we should have a conversation about that? Is that it really should pay for itself? I mean, the rates there are very, are very generous. Perhaps we should have a conversation about it, like other services we offer that are self-funded?
Okay.
Do we have a line in there for the revenue that comes in?
We do.
Do we know what that is?
I do, if you give me one second.
We do, we do use, we have an excess there that we use for other things, from what I understood. I mean, maybe I'm just mixing things up.
So the budget for it is 115,000 for the revenue. However, I believe we have additional items that get charged for that as well.
If we get like metal rebates or anything, that also goes there. So from what we collect there, the company will then send us rebates. So the drop-off center, the revenue we capture is not just the revenue from taxpayers, it's also any rebates we receive for the disposal of those products.
So what is the total cost of running the drop-off center?
Last year was $194,000.
No salary. So no salary, that's just to get rid of all the items.
Can we have it come to the front?
It's 100, they said it's $194,000 and that's without the salaries associated with it. That's just to get rid of the items from the drop-off center.
And how much did we take in?
Last year, we took in $120,797.21.
So we did not break even?
Correct.
All right. I would just ask that it's something that we explore that as costs continue to go up to, you know, probably to dispose of these items, that we should probably take a look at our fee schedule, which is, you know, it's not a lot now, at least it doesn't appear to be a lot now.
As I said, I, my under, my impression of it was it's intended to remove the debris on the side of the road. So people aren't just dropping on the side of the road and they're willing to go to the transfer station to remove it. I, this was established well before I got here.
I understand.
But I have no problem looking at it to see what we can do in terms of adjusting it to fit more accordingly.
So this is in policy, but in conversations with the former Public Works Director in Engineering, Yannis Garkowski, he would, he gave me the impression that he was always working towards a break-even scenario. Perhaps I took that as it was supposed to be self-funded.
Okay.
So like ambulance fees, as costs go up, we should probably look at our ambulance fees. As costs go up for the drop-off center, we should probably look at our fees and I'm not looking to be, you know, be a profit center, but at least to be able to fund it properly.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Recreation budget, this is increased by $17,370 over default. The main reason is maintenance budget increase as well as the department specialized equipment. So we've increased the maintenance lines as well as established a vehicle maintenance line for them to be able to repair the existing aging equipments within the recreation department. We also established the department specialized equipment to allow us to replace equipment that's more specified to each department, in this case, the recreation. So things such as the playground or if we need irrigation, things of that, things that are aging that we need to get on a replacement schedule. This is one of the budgets, as you can see from the total amount, it's smaller. We're trying to get it more in line to be able to start the replacement schedule now that we have additional people on board to help with that. The library budget, this is over by $12,193 over default. The general causes are furniture replacement and an increase in books and periodic line. The increase in appropriations for the library's furniture is to allow to replace broken, worn and damaged furniture due to its age. As most states back to the buildings of last renovation about 27 years ago. And the increase in books and periodical line is to address the rising costs of the physical and digital resources. Community development budget is increased over default by $3,000. This is due to a matching grant requirement and it's intended to provide additional appropriations for outside services to aid in various town planning projects that are in progress. One of which is being funded by a grant which requires a match. So those are what was included within the operating proposed budget.
Thank you for preparing this and putting this together.
Absolutely. Are there any questions on those?
So as I understand it, our current tax rate is, is it $3.74?
I believe so. I don't have that off the top right now.
So, and this will be $4.28?
For the operating budget, yes, based on current assessed, based on the assessment, based on the estimated assessment for 2025, that is what we're projecting.
So as the budget stands, without any additional press, we're looking at a 54 cent tax rate increase?
Correct.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. So on the safety for the DPW, is that including police detail in the, the work safety piece?
It would be, yes.
Is there any way to separate the costs so we can see what both of those are on, on with and without?
So the intent with it is to leave it as the work zone safety. That way, should we have other options, we're not pulling from, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul essentially.
You don't have to, I'm not saying separate line items, sorry.
Okay.
I misspoke on that. What I'm saying is do we know how much each of those costs when we're going into it? Like how much is the detail cost? Because those seem significantly different in that?
Yep. So I believe when we established it, the initial intent was for just the police details and then we established the wording of work zone safety to allow us to...
Signs, the jersey barriers.
Exactly. Have additional items. So initially, the entire intent was for the police detail.
I'm just wondering if we know the amounts. That, that's what I'm asking.
So it would be the, we'll let Dave come up and speak more on this one.
I think I understand what you're driving at. So the, the way we arranged it, the, the dollar amount was we looked at last few years and what we've done for roadwork and where our guys were assigned to do it. We came to an agreement that it was about 1,500 man hours that we were using of labor to be out there doing roadwork. Now, that's not a constant. Every year, that's going to change. Some years, we're going to do more roads, some years, we're going to do less. Some years, we're going to have trees that get blown down. We're going to be out there longer than normally. So what we tried to do was just kind of come up with, you know, being this is the first year that we're entertaining this, is that we would come up with a, with a line that we could use it for that. If there's something that, something very large or catastrophic comes up where we need to set up a definitive work zone for a long period of time, we could also rent jersey barriers. We could also do some advanced warning notifications and things of that nature. So it's not like we're going to rent jersey barriers every year for $10,000 and we're going to, you know, bring out some attenuators every year for $5,000 and the rest is going to be for, you know, for details. So it's just a generic work zone safety that, that would encompass all those aspects to keep the, the work zone safe. Does that answer your question?
I mean, for the, for the most part. So I'm just, and maybe this is getting too deep into it. I just wondered the calculation that went into that, but I can...
Yeah, it was, so it was 1,500 hours and then we talked to the police department and got their rates, what it is per hour for the detail and just assign that accordingly.
Perfect. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any questions from the Budget Committee?
Okay, so, it was kind of a big question, but we, we're rightsizing lines each year. It seems like each year, over the last few years, we've been trying to fix some lines. How closely to having the lines right-sized overall? You know, like it seems like we catch something each year where we're like, okay, this was underfunded for the last, you know, two decades and we're going to fix this. And then the following year, we're like, okay, this was underfunded for the last few decades, we're going to fix this. So where are we caught them? Or the, or the vast majority of them? Are we getting there?
We're working...
That's a big question.
It, it is, but we're, we're working towards it. We were trying to do it in a responsible pace, that way the taxpayers don't see it all in one year. Where we're able to kind of go and as equipment and as technology increase, the hope is that efficiencies will help save other areas.
So if I... So this, what you just presented is rightsizing everything, correct?
This is rightsizing mainly the overtime lines and training lines.
Okay.
Which is why if you look, the increase from last year's budget, a majority of it comes from the public safety lines. It's either, between that and insurance, between insurance, DPW, police and fire, that is a sizable amount of any of the increase if you look at the total.
So what calculation went into the overtime and how was that calculated?
So what we did is we took the last three years of hours and we took what the average overtime rate is for each of the divisions and calculated it in that fashion.
Okay.
So we took what an individual would be projected to make next fiscal year, their overtime rate by the average of the last three years total overtime.
Does the change in the number of staff change? Because if, did you, did you take that into account? Because there's been different...
So in the fire department, you'll notice that it has increased in the operating budget for that as well.
Okay.
See, the problem with this is...
So, sorry, I don't mean to...
Are you done?
Nope. I just realized I need to answer both there. That's what we do for default.
Okay.
I believe the police, for the main part, left it with that. The fire department, with everything going on, they looked at what on average would do it. And that's why you're looking at 600 hours for firefighter lieutenant and 500 hours for battalion chief.
So what went into that calculation then?
So that one, we'll need to call up Phil for this.
So, so essentially, we did what they do and we took three years' worth of data. We threw COVID out because that skews the whole thing. And we took three years' worth of data and we figured out how many hours were used in three years for roughly what it would be for 13 people. Obviously, we had 12. Last year, we took into account the shifts we dropped down between February and the beginning of the new fiscal year, which was about 1,700 hours, and we factored that in. And what we came up with was the number and then we also included in that two positions of, of injury. Because people get injured in our, our job. So if we don't factor that in and we have an injury, we're going to be right where we were before, which is not having enough funding. So the 500, the 600 hours for firefighters and lieutenants and the 550 hours for battalion chiefs takes into account three years' worth of, of our data averaged out. And then including in two positions i- if people were to be out on injury. So for instance, right now, we have somebody who's been out with cancer for a year and a half, right? And that's been, that's been cutting into it. This fall, we had three injuries that have taken anywhere from three months to six months to heal, right? So we, we brought that into, to factor what that number would be to get us through the year at 13.
Is there a different rate of injuries, like on the battalion chief line versus the...
No, the battalion chief line actually doesn't factor in injury.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I should have, the battalion chief line doesn't factor in injury. The battalion chief line just factors in that they, they have, they carry a lot of time on the books because they, they have been here the longest, right? So their line just factors in if they were to work 550 hours or to take 550 hours of overtime in, in the, the year.
500 hours.
Or 500, I'm sorry, 500. And then the firefighter line does include the injury, the firefighter lieutenant line does include the injury piece of that.
A lot of it's controlled, by the way, there's CBAs written.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, and that's part of it. It's, it's basing that, that's all numbers based on contractual hours that they have on the books that they can take. In the last three years, we haven't had a battalion chief out on injury, right? Or off for an extended period of time. It's just been the time that they've taken contractually. Yeah, like knock on, yes, please, knock on. Yeah, we don't need that. But yeah, that's...
So that would be the big difference between the default and the increases?
Exactly. And one of the other factors, as he mentioned, last year, they dropped from February to June to 11. Historically, that's what they've done. So when I take the average hours, it accounts for that drop.
Okay.
That's why you have that giant difference between what they, what we have in the operating versus what we have in the default.
Right. We, we tried to come up with a, because again, trying to guess overtimes like throwing a dart, right? Because you don't, you don't know what's going to happen. We don't know storms. I don't know what could happen in somebody's personal life that requires them to be out. We have, because our department's younger, we have people who are having kids a, a lot more, so they're taking time off for that. So it was an attempt to use data to try to figure out a realistic number. We took the, the, the salaries and the overtime rates of what every member would be next year, all sort of come up with that so that we weren't taking like the highest or the lowest. We were taking what we had on the books to try to get a realistic number.
And for theirs, they did it by individual, where mine was an average of everyone.
Right. We plugged it in individually to include the 13th position that is currently open at its lowest rate coming in.
Which for their, I think it's contractually obligated overtime, that is all, that's based on per individual and not an average rate. The same with the police department for their federally mandated, because I know it's going to be tied to that individual, I could go by that. But overtime, we don't know who's going to take it.
Yeah.
So we take the average of who's available and what the rates are.
Okay. Are we paying for the people out on leave or on injury? Are they on some sort of long-term?
It depends on what type of position they're in. Whether it's short-term, long-term or workers' comp, depends on what we're paying or what we're receiving back.
But you, I think what you're getting to is you're correct. We're not always, if someone's out, it's not...
So you're, yeah, you're carrying the full staff salary burden.
Exactly. And if they receive...
It seems like you're...
Right. If they receive workers' comp or short-term, they are allowed to supplement with their own time so that they get to 100% of their pay.
And we, and we try to offer, you know, light duty work so that they can come in and assist us in a manner that we would need assistance for to help offset that also.
Yeah, I just think, I think we're budgeting a little heavy considering we're not taking this account. If we're accounting for the overtime for injuries, we're not accounting for the savings of the, the salary. I think there, there might be a little bit wiggle from there.
True, but the intent of, of this increase is to avoid some of the problems we've had in the recent past where we're not dropping down or we're... The intent, the intent of this is to be able to stay at 13 all the time.
Correct. Correct.
Now, if I can comment on that for a minute. It seems unusual to me to say, okay, we need to have 13 firefighters on shift every battalion, but we're only going to have 13 employees on that shift. Know what I'm saying? Like from my police department that I worked on, if we needed, I don't know, 10 officers on 10 posts, we would have 15 officers on, on that shift every day. And if, then you're accounting for, you know, like 15% take leave and somebody calls out sick and, you know, somebody got hurt, we still have 10 guys to man, to man the shift. Now, now that's obviously more expensive to have, say, 16 firefighters on each battalion with an expectation that 13 of them are actually there every single day. Is it really cheaper to pay the overtime than it is to have the three additional bodies on each battalion? And I realize that that's, that could be way more. I'm asking like if we're paying for one guy to take leave, we're paying him to be on leave and we're paying time and a half to whoever replaces him, is it better to just have more people if we could really staff it?
I'll default to the fire department on this one.
That, that's a, that's a... Yes, I mean, yes, it would be, it would be beneficial to have a amount of people and then set a floor with which we would only drop down to, right? We've never historically, and the fire service has never historically operated that way, right? Yes, we have always said we're going to drop to 11 because funds don't allow for it. But if we have the funding for 15, we want our floor to be 15, right? And so if you look at other fire departments, some of them contractually agree upon what their floor is. Some of them don't have a floor and will, will drop depending on the budget is. So it's, that's kind of outside of the...
I'm not suggesting change in the floor.
No.
I'm suggesting having more staff than the floor.
More staff is always helpful. I guess that, that's that, you know, that, that would help us greatly. It's kind of outside of the norm of how fire departments operate, that, that mentality of, say, staffing 15 but dropping to, to 13, right? If we're staffing 15, the goal is to have the money to staff to 15. Same conversation we're having right now. We have 13, the goal is to staff to 13 and be able to cover 13. Again, outside of a large unexpected amount of, of injuries or storms or whatever the case may be.
I only asked the question to see what would, what might be the cheaper option, but I realize that the system we have now...
And then, and then unfortunately, like, and, and we, we were talking about this, if the overtime's taken by a lieutenant paramedic at that sixth, step six versus a firefighter at step one, it, it's hard to, and that's the case with the, the CBA. It could be either of those. So it's, it's hard to say the dollar figure is going to be cheaper because this person takes it versus that person taking it.
The other thing I think with the overtime versus the higher staffing is the benefits portion of it that doesn't get calculated because benefits aren't part of people's overall salary that they get paid. And the insurance and the rates and, and how much that's fluctuating as we've seen over the last few years, that's probably a, a missing piece of it too that will need to be taken into account cost-wise.
So, so that's a piece of it, but you still...
So, so that's a piece of it, but you still pay FICA.
Yep.
You still pay Medicare.
Right.
You still pay all those other pieces. It costs $150,000 to put a firefighter on the street. Man, that's what it costs. And so if we, it really depends on what you decide you're going to staff at. If you're going to staff at NFPA, I forget the number on it, but the NFPA regulation for 16, then you're going to need 18 firefighters, you know, for a battalion. That, that's just the way it works. If you're going to staff at 13, you need, you need 15. And what's going to happen long-term is, is that the, um, the overtime is going to even out. And that they'll, they'll, your overtime budget will actually stabilize over that period of time, depending on how, what you decide your staffing level is. I mean, it's just, it's just the way it works.
The issue for why overtime is where it's at right now is we're at 13 and the expected minimum staffing is 13. So anyone calls out, it's time and a half plus that person. So that's why we're in the situation where you're looking at 600 hours per individual. And I know I said I default to Phil, but essentially I, I believe it would be assistance to have the difference between what minimum staffing is and what's available. I don't know the exact calculation of where that break even would be, but as Phil said, I don't think the fire department's going to complain with additional staff.
Right. Plus, if, if every one of your firefighters, according to these, this averages that you put out there is working 600 hours of overtime a year. That's a lot of OT for that individual to be working more and be on shift more. And it's not like it's not a demanding job, right? So I'm just saying for the future, we might want to consider having a difference between the staffing level and the floor in order to not have, not ask these guys to work 2,600, 2,800 hours, whatever it is, but really only expect them to be there 21 or 2,200 hours, a little bit of overtime is expected.
But are they dependent on those 600 hours of overtime?
That is true. Yes, I get that.
But, but ultimately, ultimately in my position, if I fill the position so that they are all staffed, then the overtime numbers come down, right? Because we're not filling vacancies, right? And if overtime numbers come down, people go home on their days off, which is what, the, the way our schedule is set up for that reason, right? And, and it's better for the whole, right? For the whole department. So um.
Yeah, I, I, my father's a firefighter.
Yeah, so.
He depended on those overtimes, you know?
Yep.
Can't feed a family on a hundred percent salary alone.
And we, and we, we, we express that overtime is not a guarantee, right? You know, but.
Anyway, I don't know how that process, I don't know how we get from here to there, but I, I'd love to, for you guys to look further into that over the, over the.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, that, that may be a year, two, three years down the road to finally make that change where we're not dependent on this really significant amount of overtime, but we have more people available. I mean, because even filling the spots would probably be difficult.
Perhaps that could be an analysis that you can work with Justin on.
Sure.
When is that final break even or when do we actually make it out financially?
But you're never going to get to a final break even. You're only going to get the stabilization. What you have to look at is, is you have to, you have to make a decision as a community. How are we going to run as a community? Are you going to run four people on an engine? If you're going to run four people on an engine, you're going to run a, you're going to run a battalion of 16. The NFPA, you know, by, you know, bylines lay it out very clearly. If you're running a battalion of 16, are you going to find an acceptable to run your fire department at a level no low, lower than 14? If you don't find that to be acceptable and you're only going to run a fire department at a level of 16, then you need 18. Your overtime will even out over a period of time. It's never going to, it's never going to go completely down. It's going to even out over a period of time because those same employees, you know, are going to take vacation. They're going to have sick days. They're going to have personal days. And when you start adding up the numbers and everything and you just simply put it against a 365 day a week, seven day a week calendar and you work four and two, right?
It's, it's one on, one off, one on, five off.
So when you're working those kinds of schedules and everything, those are the type of numbers you start talking about. The best you can hope for is some sort of stabilization to your overtime. But, but then you have to commit to the level of staff you're going to have. That's why when we did the budget on Saturday, I brought up the fact that if we're going to do this and stay at 13, you need to be talking about eight more firefighters. Please, please tell me if I'm not making any sense, but that's, that's sort of just how the numbers work.
No, that makes perfect sense. And the, the fact is you could add more staff, but that doesn't necessarily always equal a decrease because they would be operating like a firefighter typically does not operate in, in, in departments all across. So the overtime could actually increase the, the line itself when you, when you, and you staff more with the intention of lowering your overtime, but it doesn't always equal out that way, nor is there any guarantee it will.
You never heard me say flat. I heard, you heard me say stable.
Yep, yep.
Doesn't mean it's going to, so when you talk about stabilization, you're talking about a range. You know, that's what the community has to decide. What, that's what they have to decide whether they want to accept that or not. If the community wants to accept that, then the path forward is to increase staff. If you're trying to stabilize overtime, if you're willing to accept large overtime numbers, you know, with the, the cost benefit analysis of possibly that you're not going to pay benefits, then that's the decision you make. But also understand that you're also making a decision to only run at 13 and some days you're not going to have 13. You're going to pay overtime and some days someone's not going to take the overtime. You know, and you're going to run at 12 or you're going to run at 11. That's what's going to happen. That's the reality of it. So that's, I, I, it's probably too much of an answer, but that's, am I saying anything that doesn't happen?
No, and, and ultimately what we tried to come up with for this budget cycle was what it would take to run at 13 for the year without any crazy situations happening, if that makes sense. It major injuries, long-term injuries, lots of storms, things of that nature.
I think my question's kind of a two-parter. One, I'm thinking about what Ryan said about his dad wanting the extra overtime because he wants the extra pay. Have we talked to the firefighters on staff and asked them, would they prefer not needing to that overtime and maybe getting more time off if we added additional staff versus they like the overtime and they want to keep that overtime?
You're going to get two different answers. You're going to get some people that like the overtime, but I can tell you that we had a lot of holdovers. So when overtime was heavy the last two years, like historically heavy, we were getting holdover after holdover because we were trying to maintain staffing at a certain level. And it, guys were, and, and girls were not taking it and we were holding people over and holdover was going up. So I think again, there is a threshold of how much somebody can take when I, when mentally and physically, when it comes to working, right? In all of this, there is a threshold and, and at certain point you cross that threshold from the overtime is great to I, I, I need to go home and have a mental break.
With this over, and the overtime budget, we're right sizing it, would we kind of see this as um the upper limit of what overtime could be like?
So just to, just to clarify here, we're right sizing it for next year.
Yes.
This changes the year after.
Okay.
This is one that it's, it's not going to remain, it's going to fluctuate and it's going to have to, they're going to have to recalculate what they believe it will be based on the status of everything.
Okay, so that we're, so we're right sizing it for the following year only.
Fiscal year 26, correct.
So is that calculation a most, a ceiling, like worst case scenario, we, this is how much overtime we need? Or this is how much overtime we think we need on average? We'll probably eat all, through all of it or?
To our best abilities, it is what we think will allow us to staff at 13 to include one or two injuries. At, at the highest uh like a lieutenant paramedic top step injury, right? That's, that's what we got. So that number is a little high because we took the highest possibility of, of a person that could get injured to, to figure that out versus taking the low because I think that that would be lowballing.
Right, and then we'd be in the same problem.
Right, we'd be, exactly, exactly. But, but again, I come back to that's factoring too. I don't think it's responsible. We, myself and Shana, we don't think it's responsible. I'll come forth to you and say we want to, to have enough money to cover three, four, five, six. That, that's, that's unrealistic and that's, that's irresponsible, right? I think two people is a, is a responsible uh i- increase or a responsible um I guess estimate of what could happen.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh quickly.
I, I know we're talking about the um operating budget right now, but you know, we're talking about how much risk is, risk is built into the, this budget. I, I just think that, you know, if there's enough risk built into this budget, um we should be a little bit skeptical about additional contingency fund. Just something to think about and discuss. I mean, we didn't discuss the last time. Again, if there's risks, if the risk is appropriate, do I need the extra fund? Like I think there's also risk built into the operating budget in general. So.
Justin, is that something that we can actually have as a contingency fund?
Uh, yes, it is. Per RSA. 3198A.
The contingency budget too is being fully funded by the, uh, the undesignated fund balance this year as well. So there's no tax impact to the contingency fund.
And anything that is charged to that has to go before the town council as well and be reviewed and published in the annual report. So the taxpayers are aware of exactly what was charged to that fund.
For my memory, what are we funding it? How much is it?
It is 396,668.
And is that invested the same way UFB is invested?
So it essentially will act as a UFB we can draw on. Right now, unlike the school, we're not able to draw on UFB unless it's an emergency situation. This will allow it to be drawn on with the approval of the town council.
But if, if that $400,000 was in the UFB, we would invest that and make whatever.
Yes.
Are we going to get the same kind of revenue if we don't touch it?
Yes. To the best of my knowledge, essentially it will act as though it is, it cash flow wise, it'll act as though it is part of the general fund.
But it's not the same as being in there because when we are looking at our finances and what we have in the UFB, that's actually drawn down and it does not count towards that amount.
Towards the UFB amount, but he was asking about the interest that's earned on it. Yes, so essentially it will segregate that out from the UFB.
Yep.
Into this fund. And then my understanding of the fund, I have to get further clarification from DRA is it has to be reestablished every year. It's not a set it and forget it. So next year, it again will be based on the calculation and go from there. And this amount will return to UFB if whatever is not used. And essentially the way I look at it is it allows an additional appropriation for emergency situations, for contingencies such as this where overtime is uh going higher than anticipated.
We go with fire? All right, thank you. Please continue.
All right.
So before we go into the requests outside the operating budget.
Yes.
And looking at the sheet that you gave us here and everything, not including the CBAs, if everything goes on the ballot here and passes, we're looking at a 93 cent increase on the tax rate.
Does that include your 52 cent number from earlier?
Yes.
Can I say something about that?
Yeah.
So we're looking at 93 cents before we.
And that's, that's based on 2023's tax rate, not 2024's.
And, and also based on the, the CBAs that we have not sent to the ballot yet. We, we haven't, we haven't come up with numbers on those yet because we haven't concluded negotiations.
Correct.
Okay, so it's, it's not unrealistic that if those were to be included in this as well, we'd be looking at somewhere around a dollar 20. Minimum.
Yeah, minimum.
Okay, so we're going into this conversation right now going up a dollar 20. That's just.
Assuming everything passes, correct.
I just want to make sure everybody, when we start talking about this, you know where we're at.
And again, that's based on 23's tax rate. 24's has not been set yet.
Right, so, so that's based on that. So we're looking at minimum $500 on a $500,000 home.
Just the town?
Just the town side. So before we start having this next conversation, that's, that's our starting point.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, it's totally fine. It, it's a good lead-in for what I'm about to say. I just, I'm sorry I missed Saturday. I was in Chicago for work, so I really apologize. But when I watched back, you guys, I am appalled at what I saw. I really am. We're not spending cheerleaders. That is not our job. That is not our job. It was very disappointing. So that's all I had to say. It's irresponsible and it's privileged thinking that we can all afford this stuff.
I don't think there was any privileged thinking going on. I think there was discussions going on about what's a priority.
Are you thriving? Like, come on. No.
Anyway.
That's all I had to say.
Point, point is I think that we're trying to, we're trying to figure out the balance as always between services and taxes, right? And there seems to be some recent history and people speaking at town council meetings saying that, you know, they expect the services to be maintained. And so we're trying to make a clear picture of what it takes to do that.
Respectfully, I don't think they're asking for them to be maintained. I'm asking, I think they're asking for excellent services.
Fair enough. I may have been downplaying.
Yeah, I think that's what, I think that's what they're asking for. And you know, if we're going to talk about, if we're going to have an open and honest conversation with the community, that's why I brought up that you're looking at a dollar 20. The schools are looking at 8.7 million dollars for kindergarten. They also are looking at the teacher's contract coming forward. You know, in this, in this voting year, what you're also looking at is a um, you know, is an increase in medical here from 41,000 for a family plan to $45,000 for a family plan, which is in this budget already. You know, and we all know that the cost of everything has gone up over 20%. So for, just as long as we're going into this, eyes wide open. You know, we're looking at, you know, you could be looking at sending to the voters, you know, upwards of $2 on the tax rate. I mean, if you look at the schools in the town and we're only 23% of the, of, of the budget. So just, I don't want to, you know, pull the air out of the room or anything, but it, once you bring this up, at least everybody's on the same page. And if that's what the community wants to do, so be it.
So when I look at this, I mean, I'm glad you brought up the numbers, John. 54 cents on the tax rate is a lot. Um, but what we've talked about, the discussions we've had with everybody here, the discussions we had before on this, it all falls in the realm of something, well, what I would call reasonable. A dollar 20 just for the town and the tax rate is not something I'd say falls within the realm of reasonable. And I think once we cross this line, this is the frosting on the cake that comes through. And you know, when, when we're sitting there asking them to come up with more money to spend, that's where I'm saying we're, we're crossing that line into it. And so everything past this line is frosting as far as I'm concerned and you know, we can look at it, but you know, we've got to keep my people.
I'm not necessarily interested in where this presentation goes from here. No offense, Justin.
Yeah.
That, you know, I feel like.
I wanted to separate them out, so you understood. So everyone's aware, this does not include the warrant articles that you also see on there. This is just the additional items that were presented in that budget that are not part of the proposed.
And this isn't me just trying to grandstand here. There's been people who saw that meeting, heard that number and boom, this is around like, you know, do I need to start making plans to move? You know, and that's, we got to, there's real people behind these numbers we're affecting. And that's, that's where I'm worried about it.
You're completely right. SB 2 was designed to be a tax cap. That's what it was. And that's why we've operated the way we have, is we operate it like it was a tax cap. And that's why the tax rate is what it is. But if the community's calling, and, and I'm not advocating one way or the other. If the community's calling for something else, then we need to know what it is and how much it costs.
People need to know what the numbers are if they want to increase staff.
And, and you know, and look, hopefully we'll get feedback.
Well, staffing comes separated out. Um, so staffing generally comes in, in warrant articles and other things. The stuff beyond this line generally is not increasing staffing. It's other things.
Well, no, I mean, looking ahead, this is what we're looking at.
Oh yeah, you didn't, like you said before this.
What you're calling icing on the cake is more staffing essentially. The major numbers here beyond this point are staffing.
I wouldn't say the major numbers are, but.
Look at, you got 2.5, you got 1.2, you got another 1.8.
Well, hold on, let's.
Why don't we, why don't we get, get to it?
Thank you.
I just wanted to leave the ground up.
Yeah.
So uh, one of the requests that we've received is a warrant article for $20,000. 10,000 will be raised through fundraising and donations. So there will be no impact to the taxpayers on that 10,000 and the remaining 10,000 will be through the warrant article. This is to improve and upgrade, or not an upgrade, to improve our current welcome to honorary signs that are about 13 plus years old and are um starting to deteriorate and show their age, I guess is the best way to put it. Um, I have John here from Beautiful I Wonder if we have questions regarding this. Or I can continue with the next item.
Any questions?
Do you want to ask along the way, Chad, or?
On this one, if you don't mind, just because I feel bad that we're in here just for, for this one.
Yeah, so how many?
Don't mind, sorry.
Yeah, how many signs is Beautiful I Wonder looking at for?
Five.
So five signs, so that is what, four thousand dollars per sign?
That's correct.
So what went into that number to come up to the four thousand?
John, do you mind coming up to the podium, please? Thank you.
John Mayen, twenty-six, King Arthur. Couple of things. One is, there are, there are five signs up there. We talked to a number of different companies. We're actually back with the original sign maker. If you look at the sign, it's, it's fairly intricate in what was originally designed. So that's, that's one of the issues. The, what's involved is they need to take, basically unbolt these signs, take them up to their facility in Littleton. Some of these signs will have to be stripped back down to bare wood. Then they'll have to come back down. I didn't put the pictures in of some of the posts. The posts are starting to crack on all these signs, so they're gonna have to probably leave those in place, fill them with a Bondo type filler, sand them down, paint them in place. There are balls on top of the posts that have to all be repainted. One of the things you might want to think about here is, you know, these signs have been out there at least thirteen years. Your house probably wouldn't stand without a, a good repaint if it stood out there for thirteen years in, in the weather, like these signs have had. This one is the one on North Rockingham Road up by the construction company equipment up there. You can see, if you look at it, it's starting to delaminate there, it's starting to fall apart. The next one, if we could ever flip to that next slide, is, this is a bullet hole in our sign over on Rockingham Road. These are just some of the examples of what's, what's gone on over thirteen years. They've, they've sort of stood the, the test of time, but, but time doesn't stop for anything. So it, it's, it's sort of time for us to fix these signs. It includes taking the signs down, repairing them, basically returning them to as new shape, and then reinstalling them in place. It also potentially includes replacement of the sponsor signs because we do have a fundraising component to this. And if you ever get the chance to look up close, there's a sponsor sign next to each of these signs. Some of the sponsors that we currently have on those signs are no longer there. They're, they're companies that don't exist anymore. So part of our new fundraising effort will be to find new sponsors for those signs. So it would include that. And it may include, still to be discussed, depends on where the money ends up, moving the sign. There's a sign over by the Wendy's. Has anybody ever seen that sign? It's okay to say no because it's hidden now by the, by the white rail that they put along the side of the highway there. You can barely see it. So we'll, we've talked to Dave from the DPW about potentially raising that sign or potentially finding in a new home someplace. So we, we could potentially move that sign.
That answer your question?
Yeah, that answered my first question. So now on, onto the next question.
I'll try not to be as long.
No, you're all good. We have a lot of industrious volunteers in town. I'm, I'm sure that could help reduce the cost to zero from, from the time. If we're putting in ten thousand of our own dollars and you're fundraising ten thousand, what happens if you don't hit your ten thousand dollar benchmark that you're looking to set from your fundraising?
Hold on a second, if I can. Where, what do you mean ten thousand dollars fundraising? Because it's.
Are the funds already secured?
Is it? Oh, never mind.
So they're gonna, we're gonna through sponsorships and through donations, Beautiful I Wonder is gonna raise ten thousand. Beautiful I Wonder already has a budget. If for some reason we only get eight thousand, then the committee could vote to spend the two thousand dollars to make up the difference. It's not gonna come from the taxpayers.
But ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand.
Currently, currently in Beautiful I Wonder's account, there's over twelve thousand dollars. So if they raise zero, they will still have it. And historically, looking at their last five years, the most they've ever spent was four thousand three hundred, and that was in twenty-one. So assuming they get something, that twelve thousand gives them that. I don't know if that answers your question in terms of the cushion that they currently have available.
I'll speak for John and say that John did a due diligence in getting the estimates. It was very difficult to get some of the estimates because some of the companies aren't in business anymore. And John did his due diligence, go out there and get the estimates. So I feel like the estimates are pretty accurate.
I'm just gonna sit on a little longer. I might have more questions later. I'll send, shoot you an email.
Thank you, John.
Oh, one question. Have you ever looked at the furniture making organization of the New Hampshire prison system?
We, we actually use them for the small signs, the sponsor signs. They're very affordable. They don't do this kind of work.
Yeah, they won't do this.
This is very intricate.
Okay.
But John is very frugal. I'll speak for John. He's very frugal, so.
Very kind, sir. All set?
Alright, anyone else? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Justin, go ahead, continue.
Alrighty, it was mentioned at the last meeting that Concert on the Common is looking to increase their town funding by seven thousand. That was mentioned to a counselor, so I just wanted to include that in there as well. This would bring their total funding to seventeen thousand.
What does that give us for the extra seven?
You would need to speak with the, the individual that reached out to them. I can reach out to them and ask them. I know that they currently, they, they're in the process of receiving a seven thousand five hundred dollar grant to assist with the cost for the concerts and everything of that nature. So my guess is a higher level of performer, but I don't want to speak on their behalf.
Yeah, I hear the same thing.
I just heard they're trying to get level of performance upgraded.
Yeah. This is the item that we had spoken about with special event costs that we essentially absorb through the budget. If you look, you'll see the old home day. The fire department is about just under a hundred and seventy hours. The police department is three hundred ninety-five hours and public works is about thirty-two. In total, this comes to about forty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars. That is requested for the departments to absorb within their, their budget.
Better than what John had estimated it at.
So this does not include the elections, which John was including the elections along with that. Will come up to the hundred thousand. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but you're looking at it being a, a good chunk. And again, that also depends on how many elections you have, what elections are, what elections they are, as well as how, not trying to sound bad, but contested emotionally they are is, I think a fair way to put it. Please, please let me know if I'm wrong on that. If you got, you know, a happy flowery one, we need less of a priest, priest presence. If you got a more intense, we need more police there to make sure that we don't have situations. But that's where this is. Again, these are not included in the proposed budget request. This is where we start talking about the items that were mentioned in the budget or mentioned in the presentation, but not necessarily asked for, just to give a heads up of, hey, this is what it would be. Six additional officers, you can see right there, you're looking at just under one point two million. And then the body worn cameras, you're looking at a total investment of one point two. However, the per fiscal year, because it'll be spread out over five years, is just under two hundred fifty thousand. I broke it down in the bottom right where you'll see the first fiscal year because there's upfitting costs for the cruisers and the police officers that you don't, they don't reoccur. So after that first year, you'll see it drops to about one hundred, uh, one million, two hundred seventy-six thousand.
Justin, did you put in there the, the traffic safety, the two officer proposal?
So that would be part of the six additional officers, if I'm correct in that understanding. Yes.
Is there a proposal where we just did the two or we do the six?
This proposal here is for all six.
Okay. Do we need all six to do that proposal? I just want to clarify.
Sir, that was asked of me, what I need to fulfill all the obligations within the organization, including to traffic safety. For traffic unit. So the question was asked, I said ideally six, because that way I would be able to increase staffing for the first time since two thousand and seven.
The reason I ask, chief, is because I've got a very positive feedback from your proposal about the traffic safety, the two officers. So I was just wondering if there was a way we could break it out because I think people, I, I got a very positive feedback from your proposal on the two, two officers.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that feedback. That comes after years of sitting and participating in the Traffic Safety Committee, hearing the concerns of the citizens and the frustrations that they have when we hear people talk about they can't go to their mailbox or they're doing, you know, seventy down a thirty and all these unfortunate stories that we hear. So the part of that was being creative when we hear people at town council meetings say, give the, give public safety what they need. I said this year, three years ago, I'm only coming here for needs, not wants. You don't want to see my want list because you don't have all night. But I'm mature and I'm responsible and I'm a taxpayer, not in this town, but two other towns. So I get it. I understand what it means. So the traffic safety part, though, you're right, i- is one of those things where I don't know what else to do for the community to, to ease those concerns because I don't have the people. And as I said last time, I'm not trying to cause a false public alarm or cry wolf or make any of these crazy assumptions. When we can only devote six hours a week, call it seven, it was six point nine, so it's seven hours a week to combat these issues that each and every one of you have on your roads, I don't know what to tell you. I don't have officers to be out there. But with the two traffic unit that we could run year round, it would be during the commuting hours based on the strategic and practical data that we put together to show what those hours are. And up to eighty hours a week is a heck of a lot better than seven.
Right. So I guess I'm, I'm asking that.
So for just, for just the two officers?
We have all those.
You don't. So the initial cost would be about three hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. The reoccurring cost would be about three hundred thirteen thousand, sixty-two dollars.
So could we break that out in the warrant article? Just because I'm thinking.
If we were to do a warrant article for it, if you guys instruct us to go forward with that, I absolutely can have it just be the two if you would like.
The reason I, I'm sorry. The, the reason I suggest that is people see one million, they, they might say, no, I don't want that. But there's people that really want the traffic safety, like they're telling me that's what they want. And if we put three hundred and fifty thousand on the ballot, you know, that might get a yes check mark. I'm just saying if there's a way to break it out because I'm getting really positive feedback from your.
Yeah, we have that broken down to the penny pretty well. You'll be put a lot of thought into that, so it's, it's all ready to go.
I have the pennies here, but I went with the rounded and they're, they're numbers.
So I see Sarah diligently taking notes. Can we just pin splitting the two?
Yep, absolutely.
When we start getting into that.
Three sixty-seven, eight oh one, twenty.
Now, chief, is it really prudent for just two or do you really need maybe more than just two officers for traffic enforcement?
That's another good question. So how it was proposed to us was just that. This was what we were seeing from being at the town council meetings. Counselor Farrell had asked, ideally, what do you really need to make all this work? And I said, well, ideally, it would be six. That way I'd be able to increase staffing for the first time since oh seven. I would be able to put an additional detective and detectives where we've been neglected since two thousand and fourteen. And then I'd be able to add the CP, Community Policing Officer, to my vision plan, which is K nine Rio and Sean Benoit to be the full-time member. We used to have a Community Policing Officer, Community Relations back in two thousand and four. And then due to cuts in that two thousand four to seven timeframe, that position was taken away from the citizens. So that is on the, the wish list.
I guess I meant just on traffic enforcement alone.
Yes.
Would you want more than just two or?
Yes, and here's, and here's why, Ted. Because of the leadership over here in our analyst wizard that I dubbed, Sergeant Bueker, we're able to really break these things down and with all the traffic equipment that we have, we're able to then take that and find the areas and the timeframes of concern. So we wouldn't just have two offices out there Monday through Friday riding around together eight to four. We would have some in the early morning when the main, the major commute times, the school zones, things of that nature.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, Ted, I think, I think two would be ideal. I think that would be a great place to start. If I said to you four, and then I realized we have too much time on our hands, and that'd be a waste of a resource and a waste of taxpayer dollar. So I, I think the two is like everything else. A bird in the hand is better than two in the bush. I would take that. I would run with it and we'd make it work.
And I'm just suggesting the breakdown because of the budget we're in and the amount of increase we're looking at for the tax rate, I think the vote is, at least the ones I've talked to, want it, want, want the two officers. They really want that.
Yeah, we have a traffic problem in town. It's no secret. We hear it all the time, right?
Yeah.
And, and that's the other reason why I had mentioned, I think it's time we encourage the town council to look at that thirty mile an hour throughout our community. It's time. It's important.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So one thing I see up there that I think honestly is, will help us save money over time, is the body worn cameras. It's, you know, I, I do like to save money, but it comes to safety issues with our officers and stuff that can be used for evidence, can, can help just provide better policing, get Lundy area up to where it should be. That's something on there that I think is, is a definite savings and a, a, the super value to get us. Council, that's a, a great point as well. A lot of great points being made up here. This is a program and a resource and a liability that, that we should have done a long time ago. But as you guys are well aware, sitting up here as budget committee members, you guys are tasked with the inevitable, the hardest decisions for the voices of the people that put you there. So for us, it's important to get this back on there for those people that work with us to provide a service for you. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, I don't want to be the chief that sits there and I can't tell a spouse why I didn't have a camera. And if an officer, hopefully it never happens here, but it's inevitable. These things do happen. If an officer is ever involved in an officer involved shooting or an attack or something at a school, and I don't have that available, I have to look at the, at the spouse and say, we didn't have it because it was too much money. I have to look at that spouse and say, your husband or, or wife is going to be placed on leave until this investigation is cleared. Had I had that, he or she could be back to work and your household wouldn't be upside down right now. And I think that it's, it's a, it's a great point, counselor. They're not cheap. And as we've said before, if there were cheaper options, we've already done it. We applied for two grants in the past. We are out of luck. So now we're at the point now where we have to go this route. As I said earlier in my first presentation, my projections were three to five year windows to get these things done. But because of the temperature from the community at those town council meetings is why we put this before you folks as a, you know, could be an additional item for the budget committee to hear.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Please continue, Justin.
So fire department additional items. I did it in two ways, one with fifteen members per battalion and then one with seventeen members per battalion. I noticed in their slide, they also asked for three additional TCOs. The new ladder truck, which as I mentioned, you won't see the calculations for that because that is one of the warrant articles that you'll see in your sheet you currently have. Repair and renovation of Station Two is also something that was mentioned and establishing an EMS revolving fund. So sixteen full-time firefighters would get us to seventeen members per battalion. And you're looking at the cost there. Eight full-time firefighters will get us to fifteen and you're looking at the cost there as well. You're looking at one point two, just under one point three for eight, and then two point five for sixteen. I'm sure the fire will jump up and let me know if I'm wrong, but I believe the NFPA standard is seventeen. I could be wrong on that. They're coming up, so maybe I am.
It's seventeen for a commercial building and sixteen, fifteen, sixteen for a residential building. I'd like to point out that, that we didn't propose these numbers. Okay, so I just want to make that clear that that did not come from us. And the three full-time dispatchers and the Station Two renovation were things in the future, not this year. And I'm just making that clear because our one goal this year, and this isn't at you, Justin, I'm just making it clear. Our one goal this year was to just make sure that the overtime was funded appropriately and that these are future things that we need to consider. But with that being said, yes.
So this, as I said, this was to clarify the items that were addressed in the meeting, that there may have been confusion whether they were included in the proposed budget. This was not their request. This again was me trying to identify the items that were spoken, discussed. And there may have been confusion about whether they were included in the budget or not. And I don't want any confusion next year. If somebody says, well, wait a minute, I voted for the operating budget, why aren't we staffing at fifteen? So we're all on the same page. These are additional items.
And I very much appreciate that. And while that may be staffing, it's, it's a different, this is in a different category.
And again, I, I think that. And again, I, I think that there has to be a reasonable approach and time and planning to accomplish goals, right? And so our approach was to get the budget to an area that supports thirteen, right? And then utilizing our minds, I guess, plan for the future, right? Because if we're not looking to the future, then we're going to be behind, right? But again, in this year's budget, it was thirteen. You know, understanding that these things are coming down the road, but not, should probably not be tackled in this singular year.
That's why you saw six patrol officers. This is what was discussed to separate it out. So everybody's aware. So there's minimal confusion going forward on what was in the operating versus what was their ideas for the fut- not ideas, their plans for the future, their hopes and ability to better provide for the citizens of Lundary.
Question. So planning for the future, right? What's our indicator that we need this? Like, what, what should we look at? Like as a community, like is it population, is it recalls?
It's population, it's call volume increase. It's industrial growth. It's through traffic growth. So it's how many people are coming to Lundary either to work or the amount of people that travel through Lundary on a, any given day. We do probably one of the highest amounts of car accidents in the state and it's because of our through traffic and the highway. You know, so those, those are the things we look at. We look at call volume growth as, as part of that and then we, we take into account. We take into account construction growth, what that is, whether that's apartments or industrial buildings or, you know, entertainment or restaurants or things of that nature.
So again, yeah, I was going to say, if you don't mind, just stick around real quick.
Sure.
Again, the repairs renovations, it's estimated at one point three. This is, as Phil said, for the future, not in the operating budget this year. One of the things that we're looking at potentially for this year, however, is to establish an EMS revolving fund. I've reached out to the town of Exeter and spoke with their fire chief regarding it. What this will do is it'll have, we'll have to get more detail. I just wanted to touch base with you guys, but you know, it is something we're looking into. We'll have to get more detail on the actual impact because taking the ambulance revenue from the fire department's budget and moving it to an EMS revolving will increase the tax rate because we no longer have that revenue to offset it. However, the tax rate will decrease. That was supposed to be decrease on the bottom one. When we move the EMS, certain EMS expenses out of the general fund budget to the revolving fund. I don't know what the nexus is going to be. I'm still working with the Exeter and I'm going to work with Fred and Phil to determine what that will potentially be, but it is something that we're looking at to see if it could be beneficial or if the town wants to move forward in that fashion.
Any questions?
I'm all done with you now. The Leach Library additional items, as I said, the warrant article is on there for a full-time children's librarian. One of the questions was asked with the Leach Library, what will allow them to thrive. I'm going to have Aaron come up to discuss.
Thank you. So I believe at the last meeting, it was mentioned, what, what, what could we do with a hundred thousand dollars to thrive? I believe a question was asked. So I, obviously this has not been approved by the trustees. This would be something we would have to review with them. But in just casual conversation with my assistant director, if we had an extra hundred thousand dollars, we would potentially request to the trustees, two part-time employees. That would provide an additional fifty-six hours a week. They would not be covered by health insurance, so that would not be a factor. We would also add a thousand dollars to our mileage line. This, it was brought up at the last trustees meeting about, regarding homebound delivery. This mileage amount would go toward that service. Obviously looking into other things and see what that looks like. We would also add to our management services account to be able to potentially set up a library cafe space. This is a space that has been asked from our patrons before. It would be minimal, like minimal food. We're not talking egg, egg and cheese sandwiches here. We're just talking with coffee and some snacks. As well as adding to our books and periodical line. This would allow for an increase in the physical and digital resources. More with keeping up with those increasing costs of those services. And then our maintenance line would allow for building and furniture and other items within the library to keep up with those repairs. So we would break that out with the two part-time and then adding to those line items if that was a possibility. We also looked at potentially if we only got half of that. Again, it would be those same line items, but would be one part-time employee. So those are just some of the options that we looked at, but of course this would have to be reviewed and discussed with the library trustees.
Any questions?
Yes. So this is what I'm talking about. This is not directed at you, Aaron.
Okay.
This is directed at all of us here. Just throw out a hundred thousand dollars. Really? Come on. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So, and I, I appreciate you bringing that to us. I just, right now I don't see the reason and just throwing a hundred thousand dollars to throw a hundred thousand dollars. I think the trustees came up with a budget that they thought would be appropriate for the town.
Okay.
Right, you've worked with them on that, you know, try and be as, you know, responsible as you could be. Fiscally, I just do not see the reason to, right, the why, just to do it, to do it. Just throw a hundred thousand to throw a hundred thousand. Not for this year. If we want to take a look at like over time, if there are things that, different wants that the library has and maybe if, you know, it coming up as a warrant article in future years for the voters to decide on instead of just being a part of the budget. I, I would like to see that as a conversation later on and.
So the only reason.
I'm sorry. Wouldn't this be a warrant article? Is that?
I thought it was.
That would be up to the town council where they want to include it in the operating budget. Or if they want it to be a separate, right, sorry, that would be up to the library trustees, town council and budget committee, whether they want to include it in the operating budget or have it be a separate warrant article. It would not be part of the fault, but it would, could, you could offer it as part of the proposed budget.
Okay.
I, just to, I apologize for any interruption. I'm bringing this to you because this was a request by a budget committee member, just bringing it to you. This, the additional amount would be very helpful for us to thrive and continue our services and continue to offer more services. I totally understand that this is not an option for this year. I just want the budget committee to, and, and the town council to understand our needs going forward. And I understand even next year, this is probably not something that's going to be possible. But down the line, in order for us to continue our services and our programs and our staffing and the additional materials that we're offering, we're looking at this kind of move up option. But this was, this was simply a, a request from a committee member that I'm bringing forward.
Yeah, and that, and that ask came from seeing the overwhelming support when all the Gmail's discussion was going on. People really love the library. They really appreciate the services that the library has to offer. So if you had a little bit more, which according to the sixty-two thousand five hundred appropriations on point one percent, this is less than ten dollars a year on a five hundred thousand dollar home. So we're not talking a ton of extra money taxpayer wise, it's ten dollars a year, not ten dollars a month, ten dollars, less than ten dollars for the year, which will allow the library to, you know, have that little bit more. And again, with the overwhelming support that I saw for the library, I figured it was worth bringing to the table, seeing what Aaron would have to offer and how the taxpayers felt about it.
And I do appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward to let people know what really are what our needs are, our realistic needs are. Our budget is, our increase from last year for our budget is less than fire, police and DPW. It's less than five percent. So I do believe that our ask this year is reasonable and appropriate. But I do know that going forward, we will need more as any department would. And so that's, that's why I brought that, those options to you. But again, nothing has been discussed with the trustees and I don't anticipate a change in our budget based on that request.
Okay, then the second, the full-time child, children's librarian.
Yes.
Right, and the children's, you, you still, you do have someone there that's running the children's portion.
We have a department head.
Right, okay. And right now, do we really need another, someone else on staff?
Yes. Yes, we do.
You accomplish if it was only a part-time instead of a full-time?
I'm sorry?
What could you, I'm sorry. What could you accomplish if it was only a part-time addition instead of a full-time addition?
We could, that person would be in the children's room as the full-time would be. However, the reason we're asking for a full-time is to help with the additional. I mean, we've had more people visiting our programs in our library this year than we have in the past three years. So this to, this would be to accommodate those services that are, you know, right now strapped. I mean, we had two people call out sick in a one day and then we had to stop a children's program because we didn't have enough staff to, to manage it. Having a full-time person there would be assistance of that. The, the, so the person in the children's room right now is a department head. She's mainly in the children's room. That's her job, obviously, is department head. And the rotation of staff that is at that service desk are library technicians. They're not trained, I mean, this, this is no offense to my staff. I have an amazing staff and they're very knowledgeable. But this person would have an MLS, so they would have some experience with collection development. Even assist with budget management of that department regarding collection development. Assist with putting together programs, managing outreach, all of that, which our current library technicians cannot do. So this, I'm sorry. No, I'm just, this position would have a little more on their plate than what we currently have in our, in our, at the service desk there.
And the library is open sixty hours a week, so one full-time staff person can't cover all sixty hours.
That's correct.
And an additional staff person would bring that up to eighty hours a week, which allows for twenty hours a week of overlap between the two full-time staff people for things like Saturdays where it's probably a lot busier, holidays and accounts for probably vacation time and things like that and, and other things. Yeah.
Yeah, and having a full-time children's librarian in the, in that room with the department head would allow those technicians to assist in other areas of the library where, where we are lacking. Other department areas, other service opportunities. Any other questions?
Yes. So is this just talking about the additional items and not what's in here in the big budget book? So that'll be later.
So this is the children's librarian is a warrant article. So if you look at one of the front pages where.
That what you presented on last?
Yes, I did that on Saturday.
Then I do have questions about that then.
Okay.
Okay, so currently the library has eighty percent of their budget dedicated solely to salaries. And if you add in another person, even though you budgeted about forty-nine thousand for that position, you wanted someone with a master's of library science. Those are more expensive than that. And if you want to bring on that person full-time, that would, that would bring you up to eighty-five percent salary. Balance, I guess. It just seems a little too top-heavy for me.
Okay.
And I would love to see an area where you could cut besides furniture. That would be fantastic. That's just a request from me though.
Are you, do, would, like, do you have an amount to cut or?
Just see where you can kind of trim, that's all.
Okay. I just want to be able to bring something to the trustees to, to work with.
I, I just know salary wise, looking at some of the other departments, that would be one of the, the higher ones as far as like salary versus the rest of the budget.
Any other questions?
No, thank, thank you.
How's Oscar?
He's very well, thank you, yeah.
He's on vacation right now.
No, he's back. He was only on vacation for the Veterans Day holiday. He's back.
He wasn't there today. My son was close up.
Oh, oh, he hasn't come back yet. No, he's coming back. I think he's coming back tomorrow. Yeah, yeah. The staff member who took him home came in a little bit later, so the schedule was a little off. But he, yeah, he's currently on vacation, but he will be back. He loves to travel, so. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Justin, please continue.
Um, yes. Just one item with this. So the insurance, that would be housed in the general funds insurance department. We do that to allow us for, we, we budget a family here, but the open positions, it allows us to better segregate it out and not have to budget family across the board or anything like that. It allows us to take a look at what we currently have. And we do the calculation based on that historically or within the last couple of years. So this is the total cost, per, uh, total cost for the additional cost. We just kind of had the breakdown of everything.
This is a duplicate slide.
It is a duplicate slide.
I forgot to delete the.
No worries.
One after I made it pretty.
The total number.
Where'd it go?
So if you look here, I have it broken out by what the potential tax impact is.
What the difference? What, what, what is the, what is the total additional spending? Corporation, what's this line over here? My, my computer's not working, so I can't bring anything up.
So going with?
Go with, go with staffing at fifteen.
Staffing at fifteen. Do we want to go with staffing for two officers or six?
We talked heavily about two.
Yeah, go with two because.
Use, use two.
He'll really seem to want that.
So you're looking at an additional just under two point eight million.
Which is pretty close to where we were talking about before. So two point eight million on top of what we're proposing here.
Correct.
And what did we say? It's for every sixty-six thousand, it's a penny?
Around that.
Okay, so what's sixty-six thousand into two point eight million? Someone have that real quick?
You're looking at about, about forty-two, forty-three cents.
All right, so that'd be forty-two, forty-three cents on top of a dollar twenty.
So what's it with seventeen and six, the six?
So seventeen it would be, give me one second. Seventeen and six, you'd be looking at seventy-four cents.
Okay. So we're talking about between, what did we just say? I'm sorry, it was.
Let's call it forty-three because you're around.
Forty-three to seventy-six?
Yeah, seventy-four.
Seventy-four. So we're looking between a dollar sixty-three and a dollar ninety-four. If you, you know. If we did everything. So that's.
Bruce is fifty-four, which is up to the line.
Before that.
Well, it's fifty-four, we start at fifty-four.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, totally agree. So a dollar ninety-four per thousand on five hundred. So the thousand dollars a household on a five hundred thousand dollar house.
That's disgusting.
So that's, you know, so if you're, if you're, that, I'm just using a five hundred thousand as I, I'm guessing that as an average in town. So then you put the eight point seven on from the schools. Let's say the schools go up. I don't know, let's say they go up fifty-four cents just for argument's sake. Now you're looking at thirteen hundred dollars on a five hundred thousand dollar house, which would be about the five hundred thousand dollar house pay right now. The rate's fifteen seventy-four?
So I have it for ours, a five hundred thousand dollar house for us would be about seventeen thirty-five.
And last year, the median house was.
So that's just, by the way, just so everyone's aware, that is municipal only, not the entire tax.
I'm talking about, it's fifteen seventy-four, right? Is the, is the total tax rate?
So that would be seven thousand eight hundred seventy dollars if it's fifteen seventy-four.
Okay, so if it's, so today you pay seven thousand dollars, it's going to go up to nine thousand.
And as Sean said, what's the average?
If you do, if you do, if you do everything.
Yeah, because you, you did it on a five hundred thousand dollar house and I calculated this last year when I was looking at all the tax rates. It was five ninety-four last year on the median house in Lundary. So five hundred is even below that.
Five ninety-four?
Yeah, that's last year's prices.
So that's a, that's a seventeen and a half percent increase.
Yeah.
And that's, that's just, that's just our side.
Yep.
Now we have the schools in, you're looking at a twenty-five percent increase.
I don't think any of us are in favor of doing all of those things.
No.
I hope not, yeah.
Nope. Well, you're having the conversation. At least you're having it.
Right.
And the public needs to know what the numbers are.
Right.
And if the public wants to actually increase services and increase people who provide those services, they need to know what those numbers are.
Yes.
And we as the public, servants of the town need to at least provide the information. And if people keep saying, we want this, we want this, we want this, but yet we're not providing that to them to actually vote upon and make a decision as a town with how our town government sits, then really, we're not doing our job. We're not providing the public what they're asking for.
Well, I guess that's one way to get the.
Well, I guess that's one way to get the 4,000-plus voters out to vote.
Let the people decide. We're providing the information, we're letting them decide.
I'm ready for all 17,000 to show up.
If we have such a, you know.
So the question becomes is, you know, and I'm, having been, having been my 15th budget now, the question becomes is the same question that we have faced for the last many years. Are we working for essential services or are we working for excellent services? And that's, that's the differential, and that's what you have to decide. All these years, we've always operated under essential services. Is it perfect? No. We've always gone to the voters and asked them what they wanted, do you want more employees? And they vote, they almost always vote yes. I think only one time they voted no on a new employee initiative. So we've got to make a decision, how are we going to go back to the voters with this? Is it, and all we're really talking about here is the same thing we've been talking about for the last 10 years. Everything has been a phased approach.
I'll speak as one voter, if my taxes go up $2,000, I'm going to get out and vote. So.
Well, at least you didn't say you were going to move.
So, not going to move, but, you know, we've had a lot of people come to these town council meetings and say that they can't afford to live in Londonderry. If their taxes go up $2,000 and they really can't afford to live here, and then we're not doing our due diligence in the town council and as a budget committee. That's what I hear on the other end all the time.
We're saying the same thing.
I know.
I hear on the other end, though, we're such an affluent community, why don't we have these things? But then you have people who vote no on that.
Plus $2,000 more on the taxes.
Well, you can't have it one way but then want it the other way, right?
But in all honesty, it's the first time in many years we've had an extremely honest conversation versus tight the belt, hold the line. And that's what the town's done for 10 years. And that's, and it's good that we're having this conversation. Not happy about it, but it's good.
I mean, I just feel like there's a lot of people in town who want a lot of things for the town, but then don't want to pay for it. So I'm tired of hearing the other end of people complaining that we don't have it, but then they don't want to pay for it.
Ted, the average tax-
Where's the even line?
The average taxpayer doesn't understand that when they vote yes on a warrant article, their taxes are going up, they do not understand that. We need to educate them, because they don't, they come to me and they say, "Why are my taxes going up?" And I ask them, "How do they vote on the warrant article?" Because they say, "I voted yes on everything." And then they say, "Why are my taxes going up?" They don't understand that, they need-
But I made the statement last year, if you vote yes, your taxes are going up. And I got lambasted foreign in social media and in the newspaper. Okay, if you vote yes, your taxes are going up. I mean, you know, and I've said this many times here, I don't know how much longer I'm going to do this, this is all your guys' problems.
I mean, the reality is, yes, there's giving information, but I think people at home, when they see us up here Black Friday shopping with everyone's tax dollars, I think that gets a little irresponsible. And I think, yeah, people are going to vote and they'll see, you know, who wants to spend a lot, who wants to be a little more, and they can vote for us up here too, in that manner.
It's the perception, too.
But, but see, the job is, is for us to try to figure out what the right services are and what's essential services. That's the job. We're not going to get it perfect every time. People want to have improved services. They've made that known. What does that mean? And that's really what we got to fix, that's why I asked for more workshops, because that's what we have to figure out. And as you and I discussed on the phone one day, answer's always in the middle. Right? I'm not saying it's in the middle and it should be in the middle of the tax rate, but I'm saying the answer's somewhere in the middle. So we need to decide as a group, what are we going to do?
I think the other thing that doesn't get talked about enough is we're always talking about how we're spending money, but we're not, don't spend a lot of conversation, a lot of time talking about how we can bring in additional money.
I agree.
Oh, we bring in a lot of money and we spend, you'd be shocked how much time we spend on it.
Yeah, but our conversation is usually focused around what, even thus far in the budget process, all we've talked about is what are we going to spend, where are we going to spend it, what's reasonable, right? And those are the right questions, but I would like to have a little bit of a conversation about the revenue side of it and what has changed or what is changing for 2026 as far as revenue goes, at some point.
Who do you think the largest group of residential taxpayers are in this town?
Seniors on fixed income.
The 55 and older community, who live in 55 and older communities, pay $12 million in taxes. They are the largest group. They're the one demanding certain services. So they're going to come out and they're going to vote. 75 cents on every dollar we bring in, and this is why I know we bring in a lot of revenue, goes to the schools. I'm going to get in trouble for this, but we had 5,600 kids in the schools and over 1,000 employees. They were our largest community. We now have 3,950 kids in the schools and we have under 1,000 employees. It's a shrinking community. And they, they spend 75% of the tax dollars. I'm not advocating to change it or do anything differently. What I'm saying is, is the demographic of the town has changed. And I've been saying this for 10 years, it's changing and we're not changing with it. Those are the questions we need to answer. And again, I understand I'm going to get in trouble for saying anything about the schools and I'm not advocating we change anything at the schools, but they spend 75 cents on every tax dollar.
I don't think the right thing to do is catch up to their rate either.
I'm not suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is, is we need to identify what are the essential services needed to run the town? That's what I'm suggesting. And what are those things that, first you've got to say, what can't we live without? And then you've got to ask, and driving more revenue? We've doubled and tripled revenue in the last 10 years. You know, our motor vehicle revenue is up, goes up almost a million dollars every year, right?
Significant.
We get, we get over a million dollars a year out of the rental car companies up at the airport. Imagine that would go away. And we work hard to keep that.
What I, what I think I hear some of the committee and the council members say is, would it be enough time, would the 18th give you enough time to talk and put together some revenue? All right, thanks.
So.
So yes.
Behind you, you have what we currently have for the estimated revenues. And this is one, I will be honest, I go extra conservative on this because, or I try to go extra conservative on this because if I say we're going to get more revenue and it turns out come tax rate, tax rate setting time, I'm wrong, that means that tax rate the voters approved is increasing. And I don't want to do that, I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers. I'd rather have lower estimates in revenues during this process so they know it hopefully will only get better. I can't guarantee that because it also depends on the assessed values and various other factors. But I try to go lower end on this during the budget process because good news results in a lower tax rate and I'd rather have the voters vote for something higher than lower and have it end up being higher, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Justin, when's the next valuation for residential?
So we just did a full one this past, not '24, but '23, I believe.
Next year.
So it would be next year.
We do them, we do them every two to three years now versus five years so that we don't have that spike and everything. The other reason we're doing them is, is that if we wait the five years, commercial doesn't move as quickly as residential does, or at least the trends aren't showing that way. So if we do them every two to three years, we can capture the commercial piece at the same time so that we can keep the tax rate, you know, flat. We used to be like 58% commercial and then 42% residential, it's done this. It's the opposite way now.
And the other thing to keep in mind with that is if the difference between the residential, the equalization rate drops below a certain threshold, essentially we lose every abatement for, that a commercial property files. So that's by doing-
Explain that in more detail.
What?
We need to explain that in more detail. We have to be between 90 and 110%. And if we drop below 90%, every commercial property files an abatement against us. And the way the law's written, we lose every one. So that's why we're at like 96, 95, 94 right now?
I think 94. I could be wrong on that, but it's, it's not, yeah.
So that's, that's the, you know, so we really should be at 100, 110 to protect ourselves and then the tax rate would go down, but it would still take the same amount of money to run the community. But the way residential is fluctuating, you can't really hit the number. It's hard.
So, with the revenues, I do that and as I mentioned in the kickoff meeting, like the interest on investments, I left that where it is because we're expecting a cut in November, potentially in December. So I don't want to put something high there where it looks great and then all of a sudden turns out they cut it significantly and we have to cut it at that point. Motor vehicles, as was pointed out, I mean, back in '21, we budgeted 8.3 million. This year we budgeted, or for the tax rate setting, we budgeted 9.5. So that's a pretty significant increase in what the motor vehicle will be.
Where is that, 9.5?
You won't see it up there yet because that's still last year's. I'm waiting for the tax rate to be set and then I'll switch that over to 9.5. So, I'm able to talk about it, I'm waiting for the tax rate to be set to know what we actually fully have in there because I'm able to use what we've had so far to calculate what we think it will be.
And to give you an idea, I mean, that was down in the 6 millions, probably not that long ago.
Not that long ago. In 2018, it was 7.5.
So, Justin, what are some examples of state aid and departmental income?
So, state aid would be things such as meals and rooms, highway block grant, items like that. That again, we essentially, when it comes to state aid, we get the number from the state. That's it, have a great day, see you later. I use what we had last year until we get this year's number because historically it has remained either flat or increased. So, again, once we get our tax rate set, I'll have that number, that number will bump up and you'll have what we have for fiscal year '25s, budgeted for '26. That way, again, we don't have a decrease if I were to try to estimate based on previous percentages or use the formula they have and try to guess what we're getting in meals and rooms revenue statewide. Departmental income, that's, essentially that's building, is that building permits on there? No, it's not. So that is the transfer station, ambulance revenue. Give me one second, let me pull up my cheat sheet on this.
The thing to keep in mind is the tax rate isn't going to get set until right before Thanksgiving, which means the bills aren't going to be until probably the end of December. So as we're going, as we're going through this interview thing, everyone's going to see the increase in the tax rate that came from last year's vote that no one's going to remember. So, people are going to see that and then see this budget and they're going to go, what's going on? And those are all the things we've got to weigh when we're going through this. So people say, "Well, why do you, why do you stay so close to default and tighten your belt?" Because we're always a year behind. People don't remember that they voted yes the year before. And this is really an honest conversation we're having with the community.
So, departmental revenue, cable franchise fees, essentially the small amounts from senior affairs, recreation. Then you have the waste container, drop-off center, ambulance, dispatch, various police ones, zoning reviews, that pretty much makes up the majority of it.
About 1.2 million of that is cable and ambulance, right?
Correct.
Does Fidium pay anything? Because I know they're going fiber.
So at this point, they don't, it's only Comcast.
We only have a contract with Comcast.
Only a contract, Comcast?
Right, because they're on our, they're on the lines and that's the only one we have.
Yeah, but I know Fidium is in town because I just jumped onto Fidium for fiber.
So they're, they don't, under the regulation, they didn't have to come to us for a contract.
Okay.
But kind of to put it in perspective too, we have 650 up there for interest revenue and as of when I submitted this back in beginning of October, beginning of September, around there, I had budgeted 1.1 million for interest. That one fluctuates based on the rates and essentially, you know, you'll hear me say, "Keep fund balance, keep fund balance" because that allows me to build up the interest on this, which lowers the tax rate for future year, for this year without using the funds that then disappear for next year, if that makes sense.
Any other comments before we close the budget workshop, is there anything else?
No, in terms of this, you'll look and you'll see the pilot payments increase as well because New Balance has come online for the pilot payment. Along with that, you have that pretty much covers it. The other one is you'll have sewer revenue and, where is it, it's, oh, evidence transfers from capital reserve and trust funds. You'll see the 219, what that is, that is the administrative fee for the sewer fund as well as the administrative fee for the airport and 25,000 from the cemetery trustees to assist with the cost of maintaining the cemeteries.
But sewer fund is flat, it's self-funded.
Sewer fund is flat, but however, because they draw on our resources, we do charge them an administrative fee for that.
Now, Justin, how much does the New Balance pilot payment affect our taxes?
So I believe this year we budgeted 125,000, which would be just about 2 cents, roughly around that.
But isn't their pilot program more than that?
New Balance?
Yeah.
It's calculated based on it's calculated based on the percentage of, sorry. It's the percentage of improvement from the previous year.
So will the following year be more?
It should be, depending on what the tax rate is.
Thank you.
And depending on how much they've improved, everything else. Because it also, it increases their tax, not credit, but essentially the dis, the payment difference increases then decreases.
It will, it will go up based on, it was an April 1 number, so it will go up based on what's happening after April 1.
Oh, well then, yeah, the following year, once they're now fully open and operational and complete in construction, that should go up. Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
So I have a question, what happened to the CIP? It's like last year's in the budget book, the CIP meeting?
We are still working on developing a meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Any, anything else from the budget committee?
I think we can table it till next, next time.
Yep.
Anything else from the council regarding budget workshop stuff? All right, seeing none, we will conclude our budgets workshop. Do you guys want to stay up here while we finish up or do you want to take off? I'll be quick. All right, I do have a, so we'll transition to the council business. I do have a procedural question. Justin, just for clarification, should we have voted to waive the three-bid process prior to adopting the, the option for the lights?
I don't know that formality. At the end of the day, both were done in the same meeting.
Okay.
I likely will have people tell me that I'm incorrect in that fashion. However, the purchasing policy allows for the town manager to waive the competitive bid purchasing.
Okay.
And I would assume that since you guys are above the town manager, you would have the same authority to do so.
All right, thank you.
And as I mentioned, this is mainly, I didn't anticipate it being above $10,000.
Yeah.
So the first bid we got was 9,000 and the next one was above that. So, if we go by the 9,000, we only need three bids, we weren't able to get a third one. However, the second one did come in above 10,000 and historically, when that happens, I'll say, "No, we need to go out to bid now." Unfortunately, at this point in time, we don't have time to go out to bid and do a competitive bid process. The earliest we could get it in the paper would be likely next Thursday. And then we'd have to put it in for at least, and at that point, we're looking at December already and-
Public notice, public hearings and notice and-
Yep. So the plan, as I mentioned, is to do it next year for the bid processes.
Okay, all right, cool. Approval of minutes, do I have a motion to approve? We'll do both of them, so October 7th, 2020, actually, approval has to be a name vote for the non-meeting. So I'll do a roll call vote for the October 7th, 2024, non-public town council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second roll call vote?
I'm abstaining, Sean Faber wasn't there.
I, Chad Franz.
I, Ron Dunn.
Sorry.
I, Ty Combs.
John.
I, John Ferrell.
Thank you. All right, October 21st, council meeting minutes, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Chair votes in the affirmative. Liaison reports.
I will be with the DES commissioner after I go to the water council meeting in the morning to follow up on what's going on with the hiring road piece and- morning to follow up on what's going on with the hiring road piece and kind of bring him up to speed on what's going on here.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Not this time.
All right, Assistant Town Manager report?
Just, I'm back and catching up, and I'm also participating in the airport rebranding initiative that they're undergoing right now. So I'm involved in that committee, participating in that.
That sounds exciting.
It's very cool, so keep you updated.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there anything else anyone wants to add? Seeing none. Folks, next meeting is the eighteenth, Monday, the eighteenth, at seven PM, fall by December second. Same time, same place. With that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
I have a motion from Ted, second from Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative, adjourn, thank you.